Reserve the press, handicapped persons and town meeting members who've been and others who've been called forward to speak. All speakers, please start your remarks by announcing your name and precinct. The time limits this evening, with the exception of the lead speaker for each article and those of you who have asked for special dispensation on time limits, is three minutes. And the reason for this is we have a long, complicated, and frequently controversial list of agenda items on the warrant. And we will be here for at least three nights and I would appreciate your, everyone would appreciate your being as efficient and non-repetitive as possible in your remarks to town meeting. Any questions from the floor should be addressed to the moderator. And I've been asked to announce, to remind you that Brookline Food Pantry donations are being accepted in the anteroom to the auditorium. Now, I wanted to say just a couple of words about what we're doing here. It was prompted by an editorial in, or an op-ed piece in Today's Globe from Michelle Wu, who is the Chair of the Boston City Council, on the importance that cities and towns, she said cities, I say cities and towns, will play in the coming years. You might think that, in view of the existential disasters of a week ago, that what we're doing here is of pretty minor importance, but it is important and democracy begins right here in this auditorium. And I hope you will all take your duties and responsibilities as town meeting members as seriously as I take mine. We will take the articles this evening and for the rest of town meeting in the order in which they appear on the warrant. I've publicized the fact that we're combining debates on, that is, having a single debate on groups of warrant articles and I'll announce those as we reach them. We will now have a dry run on electronic voting. I remind you that the buttons that you push are numbered one, two, and three. And if you push anything else, it won't, it won't record your vote. And you will know that your vote has been recorded because the red, a red light will light up on your handheld device. If there, if there's anyone whose device does not work in this, in this dry run, please see my, the gentleman on my right who are running the electronic voting equipment. The motion, and this is not a recorded vote, it's just a test vote, motion this evening is resolved that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts should consider seceding from the Union. You will have 40 minutes and you can start the timing whenever you wish. Okay. Press one for yes, two for no, and three for abstain. You do not have to point your device at the screen. The motion carries by a substantial margin. We turn now to Article One, which relates to the payment of bills past years, there being none before us this evening. The motion is for no action, moved by Ms. Daley, seconded by Mr. Doggett. All those in favor of a no action vote on Article One, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Move to Article Two. There are two motions under Article Two, they're found on page two dash five. Over to page two dash six, moved by Mr. Waschinski, seconded by Mr. Lynn Jones, to approve the Union contracts in the first vote with the Brookline Fire Union, in the second vote with the AFSMI Local, the Staff Association of the Libraries.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Neil Waschinski, for the Board of Selectmen. As the moderator said, you have two motions before you, one to approve the FIRE contract and the other to approve the AFSMI Library Contract. I'd just like to say just a couple of words about the FIRE contract. That was a particularly difficult negotiation that was settled pretty much almost on the steps of the JLMC, the Joint Labor Management Committee, which is arbitration procedure. The settlement is for a bit more than was budgeted, but we think it's a fair settlement given the circumstances. It was for more than we budgeted for, and some of the effects of that will be seen in the next warrant article. But that said, given the circumstances and the likelihood, possibility of an even greater award in arbitration, we recommend favorable action on the FIRE contract. We also recommend favorable action on the AFSMI Library Contract.
Thank you. And traditionally, Ms. DeBeau will go through the specifics of these contracts. Ms. DeBeau?
My name is Sandra DeBeau, I'm the HR Director for the Town of Brookline. The FIRE contract is actually three different contracts that span six years. There are 2% wage increases for each of the fiscal years. There are also some adjustments to the hazardous pay stipend, the night shift differential, the education incentive provision, and the uniform allowance. The total cost of this contract is 16.9%. With regard to, oh, and one, some of the things that we got in exchange were the ability to tighten up on sick leave in significant ways that we think will have an impact on replacement cost. With regard to AFSMI, it was a fairly straightforward contract, it's a three-year contract, 2% increases for each fiscal year. There was a one-time ratification bonus similar to what we provided to the main contract in May, and $50 increase at each of the longevity steps.
Thank you, Ms. Gelbart.
Janet Gelbart, speaking for the Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee overwhelmingly supports the motion put forward by the Selectmen. By a vote of 22 in favor, one opposed, and three abstentions, we recommend favorable action on the FIRE Union agreements. And by a vote of 26, unanimous vote of 26-0-0, we recommend favorable action on the library staff agreement.
Mr. Friedman?
Harry Friedman, Precinct 12. Mr. Moderator, a close reader of the Advisory Committee's report, would note that the Advisory Committee recommended favorable action on funding the FIRE Department contract by a vote of 22 to 1. We could ponder all night who the 1 might be, but I will not leave anyone in suspense, it was I. The reason I voted against funding this contract was that many of the people on the Advisory Committee, whose opinions I respect a great deal, all described the terms of this contract the same way. And the word they used was unsustainable. The agreement exceeds the town's 2% pay increase guidelines in FY15, FY16, and FY17. It's unfair to the town, it's unfair to other unions which negotiated agreements within the guidelines. I realize that public safety unions have leverage other unions do not possess, they're able to put the town between a rock and a hard place by going to the state JLMC, a committee that is notorious for giving unions outsized settlements. However, a town meeting has the legal right to refuse to fund these awards. I am not disparaging the town's negotiators. Nevertheless, the agreement is still fiscally very troublesome. The Yankee in me cannot condone further kicking the can down the road. Our future pretends to be one of multiple school overrides and perhaps a town override to assist budgets that have been squeezed to meet school needs. As a matter of principle, I did not vote for this contract in advisory, I will not vote for it tonight, and I welcome anyone who wishes to join me.
Mr. White?
George Abbott White, Precinct 9. I'm sorry that my colleague is taking the point of view that he is, and I am sorry that the Advisory Committee has, has used what I feel is regrettable language. Our public servants, the people who provide us services in the, in this town, I think deserve the absolute best. I think to call the various payments for particular achievement or levels, including education, awards, I think is a misuse of the language. And additionally, I think if there's anything that's unsustainable, it's not providing adequate compensation for the people who are out there 24/7. Out there 24/7, and I mean the DPW, I mean the police, I mean the FIRE, I mean our teachers, I mean every single person who works for this town. Thank you.
Thank you. The first motion is for, relates to the Brookline Fire Union, and on each of these motions incorporated by reference are the reports that are found in the, under this article. On that motion, all those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries by a majority vote. On the library vote, motion on the bottom of page two dash five over to two dash six, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Article Three, our budget adjustments in part necessitated by the collective bargaining settlements that you've just heard about. Motion is on page three dash four, moved by Mr. Waschinski, seconded by Mr. Doggett.
Neil Waschinski, for the Board of Selectmen. Article Three is a mid-year budget adjustment that presents some good news and some not-so-good news. The good news is that we've received $119,972 more in state aid than we thought in May. The motion before you splits this new revenue between the schools and the town. And for the town portion, we're asking that the money be appropriated to the Collective Bargaining Reserve to help pay for the firefighter collective bargaining agreement you just approved. The not-so-good news is that the firefighters' collective bargaining agreement that you voted costs more than we budgeted to pay for it. The additional state aid helps a little, but we still have a funding shortfall. The motion before you covers the shortfall by cutting one firefighter position and a couple of cars. I want to emphasize that no one is being laid off as we're reducing an unfilled position. While we don't think these cuts will jeopardize safety, they'll require that the FIRE Department be leaner and run more efficiently. The motion also appropriates money to improve our water system to be funded by interest-free loans from the MWRA. I'd like to end by highlighting some upcoming funding challenges as we begin budget preparations for the next year. We'll be resetting the pension funding schedule in FY18, which increases the funding requirement by almost $1.5 million next year, and then a 7.85% increase annually thereafter. We can only raise revenue 2.5% a year, so that's, that's going to eat into things. We're also looking at some revenue shortfalls and expenditure increases beyond our original projections, which could adversely affect the third year of the three-year override funding plan that we voted, that the voters voted a couple of years ago. Examples of expenditure increases are, one, the delayed implementation of pays you throw, and our revised sick leave policy has affected some cost recoveries from the Recreation Revolving Fund. On the revenue side, a delay in the start of construction at Two Brookline Place has hurt. And of course, we'll be facing the need to finance the building of the Ninth Elementary School and the expansion of the high school. Lastly, I want to emphasize the importance of the town-school partnership. The partnership allows us all to plan and greatly contributes to an orderly budget process. The partnership has been flexible over the years responding to both the town's and the schools' needs. It's an important budgeting tool that I'm committing to continue. A unanimous Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action on the motion before you.
Mr. Doggett?
John Doggett, Precinct 13, and for the Advisory Committee. Selectmen, Waschinski just went over the, the numbers, I won't repeat those in the interest of time, but I would like to add that Article Three includes two appropriations for the Singletree Tank, $340,000, and the Singletree Gatehouse Improvements, $320,000. The reason for these items on the, in the article is that the appropriations were inadvertently omitted from the May Town Meeting Budget Meeting. So there is no budgetary impact on this, just that the authorization needs to be done. Also, the town administration recommended the current surplus of $59,000 in the group health budget remain, remain there to account for additional school department enrollment, so no adjustment to the group health budget is proposed. During the Advisory Committee Article Three discussion, some members raised concerns as to whether the formulaic split of the state aid on a 50-50 basis should be continued or whether it should be replaced by an approach that would allocate additional revenue to the town or schools on a basis of which departments and programs had the greatest need. Members considered how such approach might be implemented on the annual budgeting process that takes place every spring, and that this issue should take up further, be taken up further at that time. By a vote of 12 to 4 to 0, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action, action on Article Three.
On the motion on page three dash, Mr. Spiegel?
Yes, I'd like, Stanley Spiegel, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 2. I wanted to comment on the, I won't say sanctity, but the town-school split. We are being presented here with a budget where we're losing one firefighter position, unfilled though it be, and something like, if I remember correctly, $59,000 is going to the schools. And it's going because there's a formula in place. We haven't heard one word at this meeting, we did at the Advisory Committee when pushed, but this town meeting has not been informed as to why on earth, while we on the town side are losing a firefighter position, which possibly could be avoided if we had another $59,000, maybe we're cobbling together some more funds, why should $59,000 go to the schools just as a matter of formula? We are thoughtful people here, I believe like we should be. And we represent the taxpayers of the town, and the taxpayers of the town should have, count on us to be able to guarantee that the funds that they provide through their taxes are being deployed in the best possible way. Now, maybe the schools have a very valid claim, maybe they do, maybe they don't, I don't know. Certainly nobody in this room knows because you haven't heard any basis as to why we, the town side is losing a firefighter position and yet $59,000 is going to the schools without a word of justification except the formula dictates that. A year ago, after we passed the override, the town school, money came before us again, and every penny went to the town side. It did so because the override had just passed, the schools were getting a big boost, and therefore it was deemed by the authorities who make these decisions for us, that the schools needn't get anything and the town should get whatever extra funds there were. I believe that as we approve these budget changes, we should at least have the courtesy, just the plain courtesy, of somebody from the school department stepping forward and explaining why that $59,000 is an important heir to their budget. I don't doubt that it is, but aren't we entitled, aren't the citizens of Brookline, the taxpayers, entitled to at least have some inkling as to why that money is being assigned as is been suggested now and as we're about to vote on? Shouldn't at least something be presented so that we can go home and explain why this has happened? I think it should. I may be a voice in the wilderness, but I don't think this needs to wait until next May to work things out. I think we, as town meeting members, and we hold a purse strings, we should know where the money's going. And having said that, I can't support this budget without knowing why $59,000 is going to the schools. And I would urge people to think about this before they vote as well. Thank you much.
On the motion on page three dash four, those in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries by a vote of 170 to 12. Article Four, and Ms. Binker-Cosen, would you please come forward and sit in the front row? The Selectmen, by the way, have changed their position in this article from advocating a referral to supporting the main motion, which is found on the Tan Supplement Number One, pages one through eight, moved by Mr. Victolo and seconded by Ms. Heller. There's a referral vote offered by the Advisory Committee on, somewhere in here, moved, a referral to the Tobacco Control Committee, moved by Mr. Lynn Jones, seconded by Ms. Humphrey. Ms. Binker-Cosen, you have five minutes. And would Dr. Ross, Dr. Sandell, and Rachel Martin, please come forward and sit in the front row?
Thank you. I'm McKenna Binker-Cosen, a resident of, sorry. Good evening. My name is McKenna Binker-Cosen, I'm a resident of Brookline, 175 Freeman Street, and a senior at Brookline High School. The purpose of Warrant Article Four is that the Town of Brookline enhance tobacco control regulations for reducing youth access in order to conform to the state's best practices. Before anything else, I would like to thank the members of the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, the Tobacco Control Committee, and the Department of Public Health for taking the time to meet with me. In 2014, Brookline raised the minimum smoking age to 21, and with good reason. 90% of smokers started smoking before the age of 18. Tobacco products are designed and marketed to catch the attention of young people under the age of 21, long enough for them, for us, to become addicted to tobacco. There's no need for me to explain to any of you the well-known negative effects of tobacco consumption on an individual's health, and what is more, on the environment and the community they live in. However, it is because some of the tobacco products are made to be cheap, sweet, and easy to get, that even though the minimum, the minimum smoking age is 21 in Brookline, 5% of high school students, that's about 100 high school students, have reported smoking in the past 30 days in the 2016 Brookline Youth Risk Behavior Survey. As a reference, you can see on the slide above the locations of our schools and the tobacco and flavored tobacco retailers in our town. It is imperative that young people are given the time and space to educate themselves and make an informed, conscious decision about tobacco and their life. For this reason, the bylaw amendments in Warrant Article Four respond directly to the problem of underage tobacco consumption by dismantling the mantra of sweet, cheap, and easy to get, made to deceive and appeal young people into smoking for the first time. First, let us consider the issue of flavored tobacco. In 2009, the FDA banned flavored cigarettes. This is because the underlying purpose of flavoring is to make tobacco taste good. Let me rephrase that. Flavors are added to tobacco products to mask the actual taste of tobacco because barely anyone ever likes the taste of tobacco the first time they try it. Flavors deceive the youth into believing tobacco tastes good and distracts them from what they are actually ingesting. This warrant article furthers the flavoring restriction to cigars as well. Most people, when they hear cigars, they think of an abano. I want you to also think of cigarrillos, small cigars about the size of a cigarette, cheaper than cigars, and loaded with flavors. Flavors like cherry dynamite, strawberry vanilla, watermelon, chocolate, mango pineapple, wild rush, blueberry, peach, tropical fusion, fruit punch, green sweet, and pina colada. We're not talking about real fruit, and we're not talking about a treat that you share after dinner with your family. We're talking about a product that is used with exciting, that uses exciting flavors to distract people from the fact that it is harmful. This warrant article addresses the problem of access to flavored tobacco products by restricting the sale of flavored tobacco products to retail tobacco stores, in which you have to be at least 21 to even step a foot inside. There is no reason for flavored tobacco to be sold in stores which are open to all ages, including toddlers and teens. Regarding youth access to other tobacco products within any retail store selling tobacco products, this amendment would require vendors to demand identification and post a visible sign near the register that specifies that their products can only be sold to and purchased by individuals over 21, such that there is no excuse from either side to allow this transaction to occur. Secondly, this warrant article establishes a minimum retail price for a cigar sold as a single item. Currently, a cigar, single cigar can be purchased for prices as low as 60 cents. These low prices lie in the perfect range of a 15-year-old's first tobacco product purchase. Thus, the warrant article establishes the minimum price of a cigar sold as a single item at $2.50. I would like to clarify that this applies to single items, thus this pricing does not affect the calculated individual price of a single cigar, of, the calculated individual price of a cigar that is sold as part of a package or bulk. Through these measures, we further remove tobacco from the lives of younger people under 21, reducing the amount of people who start smoking, preventing future secondhand smoking, tobacco-related diseases, health risks, and a bundle of problems that come with every puff. What is more important, we will create a safer, cleaner, and healthier environment for the children and young adults of Brookline to grow up in. On one last note, I would like to add the idea that these amendments are no novelty. Currently, more than 2.4 million residents live in towns and cities across Massachusetts that have already adopted these same amendments proposed in the warrant article. Furthermore, Brookline is surrounded by cities with this legislation already in place. This includes Boston, this includes Newton, Cambridge, and Somerville. Brookline was the first community to ban tobacco in public facilities and among the first to raise the age of purchase to 21. But now our town has fallen behind others. We need to align with the best state's practices on tobacco regulations. The members of the Tobacco Control Committee of Brookline, including myself, have agreed after thorough discussion that Brookline needs to adopt these amendments. The Brookline Department of Public Health and Brookline Advisory Council on Public Health, and as just mentioned, the Board of Selectmen, have also given their support. I propose that we do not push this back further, and I am asking that you support these amendments now by voting yes on Warrant Article Four. Thank you very much.
Special thanks to Ms. Binker-Cosen, whose intelligence is exceeded only by her persistence. I call on Ms. Humphrey.
It's especially heartening to have a member of the Brookline High School take such an active part in our political process.
Put it up here. Sitska Humphrey, Precinct 6, speaking on behalf of the Advisory Committee. We commend McKenna for all the work that she has been involved in on behalf of our youth staying away from very harmful tobacco. The Advisory Committee had several reviews of Warrant Article Four, and the Advisory Committee voted to refer this article to the newly established Tobacco Control Committee with a 19-4-1 vote. Selectman Daley will give us an update on the work that the committee has done to date and that has and that has influenced the change of the vote of the selectmen. The motion to reconsider Warrant Article Four failed tonight at the Advisory Committee. Only two people voted for reconsideration. The Advisory Committee continues to be concerned in light of the recent emails received from our tobacco vendors and their wish to be participating in the hearings conducted by the Tobacco Control Committee, that they have not yet been included in that, and the Advisory Committee looks forward to a document that has been properly reviewed by them as well. Number of other questions continue to exist, in particular, minimum pricing, not for the state, but for the town, how the town is going to deal with that, and many others that are listed in the document. We hope that perhaps we will get more answers on that tonight, though, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I have six more speakers in favor of the petitioner's motion. I think we can stipulate that tobacco is bad for you, that it's a drain on our health care and economic resources, and I hope that the remaining speakers will focus on the motion and avoid repetition. Ms. Heller, oh, Ms. Daley, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Nancy Daley for the Board of Selectmen. I am the chairman of the Selectmen's Tobacco Control Committee. We have met twice, and we have discussed this, but I want to be clear, we were not able to hold a public hearing on this, so the committee was not able to give you an official recommendation. However, I myself, and I believe many of the members of the committee, are very sympathetic to Ms. Binker-Cosen's goals here. This article would change our existing tobacco control bylaw, and the three real substantive things that it would do is set the price on cigars sold individually or in packages of two at a minimum price of $2.50 per cigar. No outlet could sell flavored tobacco products except for retail tobacco stores, of which we have one in Brookline, the cigar store in Coolidge Corner. And as McKenna told you, you have to show ID when you go into that store, so it's different from a convenience store location. And finally, no outlet should sell or distribute blunt wraps, which are tubes, I guess usually made out of tobacco leaves, that intended to be filled with tobacco or whatever. We don't believe that anyone in Brookline is currently selling these. As McKenna told you, every community around us already has these provisions in effect. Currently, the age to buy tobacco products in Brookline is 21, but obviously, if you've ever walked around the high school, you know that many people below 21 are getting ahold of these products. And we, as the moderator stipulated, smoking is highly addictive. The flavored products, which the cigarettes, flavored cigarettes, have been banned nationwide, but this would carry the ban to the vaping products and to cigars and things like that that seem specifically designed to appeal to young people. We did get an email letter from many area merchants who would prefer to see this referred to the committee, because they want all changes to the tobacco bylaw to be discussed together. They also mentioned that they thought tobacco should be considered equivalently with alcohol. We, one member of our committee, Elias Audi, who is a merchant that sells these products, didn't have, doesn't have a problem with these provisions, however. And I would say that in response to that letter, that considering that all the communities around Brookline have these provisions in effect already, you're not disadvantaging our merchants vis-à-vis those in neighboring communities if you agree to favorable action on this. Furthermore, I don't know if Dr. Ross is in the front row, I don't know if he's going to say this or not, but he told us last night at our committee meeting that the deaths related to smoking in the U.S. per year are about six times greater than the deaths related to alcohol. So obviously, the two things are not on an equivalent platform. Should you choose to refer this article to the committee, we anticipate that we would be bringing these back to you in the spring, and we can discuss them again if we do that. And we may have some other provisions. But I personally, and I, the Board of Selectmen feels that we can go ahead with these and deal with whatever else comes up later. So by a unanimous vote, the Board of Selectmen urges favorable action on Warrant Article Four.
Thank you, Dr. Ross.
So as you're all well aware, cigarettes are bad, and they kill about half a million people in the U.S.
Let us have your names, sir, and your address.
John Rossim, a physician, and I'm on the Tobacco Control Committee. So as you're all well aware, cigarettes are bad, they kill about half a million people in the U.S. every year. So this is a unique problem for a business if your products kill your customers. If you make toothpaste or deodorant, you don't have to worry about your customers dying of COPD or lung cancer as Big Tobacco does. So dying smokers are a big problem for Big Tobacco. If you look at company memos inside Big Tobacco, they write about the need for replacement smokers. So who exactly are these replacement smokers? In fact, they are primarily kids and young people. So about 90% of smokers get hooked on nicotine and cigarettes before the age of 20, and there is a long and disgraceful history of Big Tobacco marketing directly to kids, for example, the Joe Camel cartoon character. So the folks at Big Tobacco are well aware that if you market products to kids, kids will get ahold of them somehow. So this warrant article is about prohibiting the sale of three products aimed at kids and young people: flavored e-cigarettes, flavored tobacco, and cheap, single cigars. And I just want to point out that flavored e-cigarettes are a particularly pernicious product, as this is an extremely easy way to get addicted to nicotine. And getting addicted to nicotine is bad for kids for two reasons. First of all, nicotine, it seems, primes young brains for addiction, making it easier for young people to subsequently get addicted to other drugs such as alcohol and cocaine. And secondly, there is data that has just emerged this past year that e-cigarettes seem to be associated with a bump in tobacco use among middle schoolers and high schoolers in the U.S. So if you look at the data over the last probably two decades, there's been a steady decline in the use of tobacco products among middle schoolers and high schoolers. Data from 2014 and 2015, published by the CDC, has shown that there's actually been a bump in tobacco use, including cigarettes, that instead of going down, it's gone up slightly. There's been an increase in flavored tobacco used in hookahs, coincident with a massive surge in e-cigarette use. So that's why I ask you to follow the lead of our neighboring communities and ban the sale of these addictive drugs aimed at young people. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Ross is a Brookline resident, and I would ask all non-town meeting member speakers to give us your address, please.
Good evening. I'm Megan Sandell. I'm a pediatrician, I'm a Brookline resident, and, full disclosure, wife of Dr. Ross. And so I wanted to just very briefly talk about the fact that we all have a common goal here, which is to help people not be addicted to tobacco. And as we think about that, we want to align our social actions, our policy actions towards that goal. This warrant article is specifically designed to align the actions, to stop people from becoming addicted early in life, and to stop products that are specifically designed for that. I think that what's really important in this is that this is a proven way of which to try and decrease that type of access. I specifically ask that we have studied this at great length, many nights, that my husband has been, been able to come to committee meetings and other things, and I'm asking that we not refer this for further review, but that we actually pass it this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Rachel Martin?
My name's Rachel Martin. I live on the corner of Beacon Street and Tapan Street in Brookline. So I am a Master's of Public Health student at Boston University, and I am a program coordinator for the '84 Movement, where I work directly with youth based out of Boston. So the '84 Movement is a Massachusetts youth tobacco prevention program that began in 2007, with the name referring to how many Massachusetts youth did not smoke at that time, so 84%. We now know that that number has increased to 92%. Great progress has been made and should continue to be made by passing Article Four in the town of Brookline. As a public health student, we aim to improve health and health behaviors by designing systems that give us the chance to do so, and try to put people in places where health decisions are easy to make. We aren't doing that by making flavored cigars easy to get and to smoke. We aren't helping youth be healthy, and we don't have any policies currently in place that facilitate this aspect of health. It's why we need to pass Article Four. I work with youth across the entire Commonwealth, and they consistently say that this is an issue they're passionate about. They're tired of being targeted with flavors designed to draw them in. They go into convenience stores all the time, and they're sick and tired of having tropical flavored cigars in their faces, like this one, Honey Berry, that I bought around the corner five minutes before I got here. These belong in adults-only establishments. I've sat in several workshops with youth, and they are truly enraged that they are researched and sought out to buy these tobacco products. And as a 22-year-old, I'm not much older than the youth I work with, and I'm still part of the youth that tobacco is targeting. And when I found out for the first time that tobacco makes candy-flavored products like mango and white grape, and we don't stop them, I also was enraged. We give Big Tobacco the opportunity to target youth by letting them sell what they sell, where they sell it, and who they sell it to. And we have the opportunity and the responsibility to stop Big Tobacco from being able to do this. We have the responsibility to give the youth of Brookline the best opportunities for success. And we have to hear them when they tell us, and they tell me every week when I meet with them, that we've had enough of tobacco being front and center in our lives. According to the Surgeon General, at least two youth become regular smokers every single day, and like McKenna mentioned, 90% of smokers start before the age of 18. What is once a peach-flavored, easy-to-smoke, and easy-to-buy 60-cent cigar soon becomes an addiction to nicotine. It's much harder to stop nicotine addiction than it is to just prevent it in the first place, and this prevention is not that hard. By not doing enough as a town to ensure that the youth cannot buy these products is to take opportunities away from the youth of Brookline for success. I ask you to pass Article Four and live up to the responsibility that we have towards Brookline youth, and hear them loud and clear when they tell us that this is enough. Thank you.
Mr. Bassett and Mr. Vitolo, would you come forward, please?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Bassett, Precinct Six. My question, reservation is only about the method of regulation. I, I think that regulating by price controls, minimum prices, is at best cumbersome. I think it may be unnecessary. We don't regulate alcohol that, that way. And I, it was said that 2.4 million people live in cities and towns with all these regulations. I wonder if all of those 2.4 million people are in places with price, price control regulations? And I wonder also, who will, who will enforce this when we, next May, perhaps we can increase the workload, which is now light, the measures, so the measures of wooden bark, maybe measures of wood bark and tobacco? I think we should consider seriously referring this so that the price, we'll get another look at regulating by prices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, thank you. Marty Rosenthal, Precinct Nine, and also co-chair with Frank Farlow of Brookline PACS. I'd like to hear more on the referral issue. When the PACS Board looked at this 10 days ago, we were persuaded that waiting of eight months or so and studying the issues that seemed to be raised by the Selectmen Advisory Committee seemed the way to go. We yield to nobody in opposing tobacco generally. PACS people took the lead in our first anti-smoking bylaw, God knows how many decades ago. So, but, but a bylaw needs to be done carefully, and I'd like to hear from both sides of this debate as to the referral issue. This motion, I guess, has been revised recently, and we don't know much about whether it's addressed all those issues that have been noted before.
Well, Mr. Rosenthal, I deeply regret to inform you that I have no speakers who will speak in favor of referral. I have two others who will, who are enthusiastically endorsing the main motion. Mr. Vitolo?
May I ask, Mr. Moderator, is referral going to be moved?
Oh, yes. It was moved at the beginning of the article, and if the referral vote passes, we will not get to the main motion, as per our usual procedures.
Well, can we at least try to get some answers on the original proponents of referral? At least one of the bodies at the front of the audience?
We've already heard from Ms. Humphrey.
I know, but nobody's addressed this issue, I don't think. All right, well, that's, that's my request, and if, if it's not going to get traction, then it won't be the first time in my career.
Well, that's sad, but true. Mr. Vitolo?
Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six, and as the petitioner of three tobacco control warrant articles that have passed nearly unanimously, I thought I'd chime in with a few observations that may even respond to a few of the recent questions at the microphone. The technical language in this warrant article is not novel. On the contrary, it's precisely the language that's being used in cities and towns across the Commonwealth. And the focus, of course, is chipping away at youth smoking. That's why we're going after kiddy flavors and products that cost less than a full pack of smokes. And the minimum price does help to keep products out of the hands of kids, and it's not a unique idea. Boston passed the minimum cigar price in 2012, and in fact, every community in the Commonwealth, John Bassett, has a minimum price on the pack of cigarettes, because that was state law enacted in 2003. So we have tons of prior art on this. Every community in the Commonwealth does this with cigarettes. It's not crazy to also do it with cigars. So at the Tobacco Control Bylaw Committee meeting last night, Committee of which I am a member, I made a couple of observations observing my colleagues. The first is that of the three members of the committee who are also town meeting members, they all individually expressed support for this warrant article passing, not being referred. And secondly, my good friend and local business owner Elias Audi, whose gas station does sell tobacco products, expressed concern. He said, "I don't want to be the community that prohibits something and have my customers just drive down the street to Newton." And when we showed him the map that showed that, in fact, Brookline's the donut hole, that the other communities have passed these restrictions, he said, "Oh, well, sign me up. I'm all in favor." He thought it was great. That is a Brookline merchant and a well-respected member of the community who personally expressed support for this just last night. So unlike so many other aspects of our law, the state legislature allows cities and towns to promulgate additional regulations and restrictions, and this proposal is a good one, because it chips away at the availability to and interest from young people. And so let's join Boston, and Cambridge, and Newton, and Somerville, and nearly 100 other Massachusetts communities in enacting this sensible improvement to our tobacco policy. And to the PACSes out there, including myself, I believe, I don't know for sure, but I believe that Frank and Marty won't hold a grudge if you in fact vote no on referral, and follow that with a yes on the main motion, and I urge you to do exactly that.
Is Stacy Chacker here?
I'm a resident of Brookline. I'm also a public health professional. I have a daughter that goes to this high school. Actually, I don't really have anything else new to say. I have to say the idea of having kids not being able to walk into convenience stores and buy candy-flavored products and e-cigarettes would be a really great thing for this town. I'm lucky, my kid does not smoke that I'm aware of, or try these products, but I do know several teenagers in the state of Massachusetts, not in Brookline, who are addicted to cigarettes, and I think that we can really take a stand here today and pass this article. Thank you.
Thank you. As I, I have no more speakers, so we'll proceed with the votes. We vote first on the referral motion. If that passes by majority vote, that concludes- If that passes by majority vote, that concludes our deliberations under Article Four. If it fails, we will take up the main motion. On the motion to refer the subject matter of this article to the Tobacco Control Committee, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion fails. On the main motion, on the Brown Supplement Number One, those in favor, please raise your hands. Motion carries by a vote of 178 to 2. Are there any abstentions? Now we proceed to Articles Five and Six. There is no motion being offered under Article Five, so we will consider Article Six. The main motion under Article Six is found on pages one to three of the orange-colored supplement Number One, moved by Mr. Richmond and seconded by Mr. Fisher. Relates to -- well, Mr. Richmond will tell you all about it.
I'm waiting for my slides.
Tell us who you are in the meantime.
Good evening. Clint Richmond, Precinct Six again. I have the privilege of serving as the co-chair of the Green Caucus, and our goal is a more sustainable Brookline. And for me, that means a community that's free from cancer and toxins, trash and litter, and fossil fuels. Fossil fuels are the link between plastics and climate change because we can't keep fossil fuels in the ground if we're using it for plastics. Next slide, please. The problem with plastics is that they don't biodegrade. I mean, there's many, but the one I'm going to mention here is -- and they often end up in the ocean, where the World Economic Forum is predicted by the year 2050, there will be more plastic than fish in the ocean. And one of the chief culprits is disposable plastic. Next slide, please. This is a quote from the gentleman who's the chair of the UN equivalent of the EPA. He says, "There's simply no justification for manufacturing plastic bags anymore anywhere." Next slide. So warrant Article Six does two things. This is an update to an existing bylaw that passed by three to one in 2012. The first is to strengthen the definition of reusable bags to eliminate all thin bags and all polyethylene and toxic PVC bags, which are now being sometimes used as reusable bags, which did not exist back in 2012. So we're keeping up with the ever-changing plastic industry. The slightly thicker bags are used at only a handful of stores, contrary to our intent because the goal of this is to eliminate plastic as much as possible. So we have CVS, and you'll see some pictures of the bags later, Stop &amp; Shop, and Pier One. The second is to restrict produce bags as well. They're sold in the same volume or distributed in the same volume as shopping bags. That's 1.5 million bags per month in the town of Brookline alone, as a reminder, and to allow recyclable paper, reusable bags, and compostable bags. Next slide, please. So here's a couple images that show that these slightly thicker bags are not being reused as much as, you know, it's sometimes cleaned. And here they are as litter on the street. Next slide. Here they are after a single use in trash and dumpster. Next slide, you'll see pictures of produce bags as litter as well. On the next slide, you'll see them. Here's the Ocean Connection heading out to sea at Singing Beach. So on the next slide, we'll see the three different types of bag -- or four different types of bags compared. The sustainability features really for these bags that we make our decisions on are whether it's compostable or natural materials, whether it's recyclable at our curbside, and whether it's reusable. And you'll see that our current sort of polyethylene produce bags don't meet any of those requirements, but we can return to traditional paper, the reusable ones that are becoming more popular, and a new technology compostable plastic. On the next slide, you'll see our proposals, like some of the others you've heard tonight, are not new. We were a pioneer in 2012, but in this case, we're catching up again with some of our neighbors, Wellesley, the Vineyard, there's many communities in the Commonwealth, the city of Portland, and Austin. And on produce bags, Williams, Tannenly, and the entire country of France are moving in the same direction. So on the next slide, you'll see again pictures of what I've been waving around up here. But in particular, I want to point out that the Crown Poly is the largest manufacturer of produce bags in the United States. They already offer a plug-compatible, if you will, pull-and-pack compostable bag. On the next slide, we will see that the cost to the stores is more for these more sustainable products. But I think when we consider the societal cost of these bags, whether it's litter control or damage to the oceans, or the fact that petroleum products receive sort of government subsidies in terms of leasing and that sort of thing, that the other choices are at least as comparable, and that's why we're moving this now. So on the final slide, I'm going to ask you to join with these many organizations. You've gotten some emails about some of the letters today, voting favorable action on Article Six. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Galbart. And Mr. Lyschinsky, would you come forward and sit in the front row, please?
Janet Galbart, speaking for the Advisory Committee. On a very narrow margin of 13 in favor, 10 opposed, and one abstention, Advisory Committee recommends no action on warrant Article Six. The petitioners are absolutely right. Plastic is not the greatest thing in the world. It will not degrade, and we need to stop pumping fossil fuels out of the ground. But this bag that they object to from CVS, I can fold up, put in my very small purse, and always have with me a reusable bag for when I go to Boston or some of the other communities, or just go down the street, and I don't want to take that whole big grocery bag, reusable bag, because I'm only buying a few items. Paper bags can only be used once. That means when CVS was sending out paper bags, every time I went to the store, I took another bag, and paper is not carbon neutral. It takes a lot of energy to produce paper, which means we're using fossil fuels. Production of paper releases carbon dioxide into the air, and it also requires that we take down trees, which is the planet's only defense, natural defense right now, against all the carbon dioxide in the air. The very thin polyethylene bags for produce are a real problem. The reason we don't think the warrant article is going to resolve it is that if you go into Stop &amp; Shop, you will see that almost everything in the produce department is already prepackaged in plastic before it gets to Brookline. There are plastic bags, there are plastic containers, there are plastic trays that are shrink-wrapped in plastic. And our feeling is, if we tell this great big market that they can't use those polyethylene bags for one small store in Brookline, instead of switching to a more sustainable method of packaging these items, they're just going to send everything that they have, eliminate those very few bulk items that we can now purchase individually, and put those in plastic too. So we applaud the petitioners, especially the changes that they made so that this warrant article is totally focused on the larger chains and no longer will negatively impact our local merchants. But we just don't think for as much as we agree with the goal that the way that they phrase this warrant article is the right direction to get where we want to go. And for that reason, we ask that you vote no action on warrant Article Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daly.
Nancy Daly for the Board of Selectmen. I'll admit, my purse is a little bigger, but this is what I keep in my purse when I'm going out shopping. As you've heard, in order to combat the proliferation of plastic bags that don't compost, the petitioners brought this article forward to strengthen our existing bylaws. In essence, it would extend the ban on plastic bags to all large stores over 2,500 square feet or smaller ones with multiple locations for checkout bags. They can use paper and reusable bags, now defined as cloth or other machine-washable fabric bags, or plastic that's not polyethylene or polyvinyl chloride and is durable, non-toxic, and more than four milliliters thick. So the CVS bag, which she just showed you, is, I think, 2.25 milliliters thick, so they have to be substantially heavier than that. Also new is the provision that grocery stores with more than 6,000 square feet of retail space, which provide the product bags inside the store for fruits and vegetables, would have to go to paper or something compostable. The petitioners have adjusted these provisions to accommodate smaller stores over the course of our discussion on this warrant article. The intent is to strengthen our bylaws to the extent that other cities and towns, which Cliff showed you, Clint showed you, sorry, are doing now. We did take issue with the provision of 8.33.2A that says merchants can give out plastic bags that are both compostable and marine biodegradable as checkout bags because no such bags are currently manufactured. So it seems like a little bit of a tease to have it in there. The petitioners indicated that they hope that these will be available eventually and therefore wanted the bylaw to accommodate that eventuality. The Selectmen's Climate Action Committee was unable to hold a public hearing on this issue due to some quorum issues, so they don't have an official committee recommendation. Selectman Heller asked me to indicate that, you know, many of them did, however, many of the individuals on that committee did favor this. Therefore, the Board of Selectmen unanimously urges favorable action on warrant Article Six.
Thank you, Mr. Lyschinsky.
Hi, I'm David Lyschinsky, resident owner of Eureka Puzzles and also Chair of the Coolidge Corner Merchants Association. So I stand here as one of the small merchants that was mentioned in the prior comments, and I'm also very pleased to say that the article has been amended so that we are able to stay in business. We do -- you're supposed to laugh then, so. We also are very pleased with the reaction or the response we've gotten from the bill's sponsors about the article. When we first became aware of it, there was certain language in there that would have made it quite difficult for us to continue to move forward, and since then, the drafters have toned it back, which we find very exciting because what we're looking forward to do is coming back and working with them over the next number of months to come up with a way of continuing to reduce the use of plastic bags within Brookline and at the same time retain the independent character and the quality of the shops that are here within our town confines. So speaking on behalf of the Merchants Association, I'd like to say that we have no objections to the article as it stands now. Thank you.
Jane Gilman, Precinct Three, speaking on behalf of Town Meeting Green Caucus in favor of the Selectmen's motion on warrant Article Six. Following Brookline's lead today, 40 Massachusetts communities have adopted plastic bag regulations, and numerous others will soon be voting on them. Tonight, we have the opportunity to improve upon our initial warrant article banning plastic bags. Now, the Advisory Committee raises several objections to the warrant article. First, with respect to supermarkets' thin profit margin. While the Green Caucus supports our local businesses and we want a choice of supermarkets in Brookline, we cannot in good conscience do so at a cost to the environment. Our merchants need to find and use other materials, and they exist. Whole Foods has a product bag. You put your tomatoes or whatever in it, take it to the cash register, they weigh it, you take it home and put it in your refrigerator. Stores in San Francisco already provide plastic bags for products. I have one here, they're available all over the town. Second, the Advisory Committee resurrected the old debate concerning the relative carbon footprint size of manufacturing plastic versus paper bags. The appropriate discussion acknowledges that, one, plastic does not biodegrade, paper does; two, that plastic products wreak havoc on the environment and wildlife, but paper products do not; and, three, that fossil fuels are not a renewable resource. Trees are. The truth is petroleum is too precious a resource to squander frivolously on plastic bags. In its letter in support of warrant Article Six, the Mass Autobahn writes, quote, "The manufacture and use of plastic bags constitute a major source of greenhouse gas emissions, pollution, and marine litter. These bags also pose the threat to sea turtles, whales, and other marine animals that die every year from eating plastic bags they mistake for food." None of these criticisms pertain to paper bags. More commentary about plastics' harm, August 20, 2009, National Geographic prints an article entitled, "Plastic Breaks Down in the Ocean." May 25, 2011, the Huffington Post writes, "Did you just eat a plastic bag? How plastic pollution has entered our food chain." And on October 5, 2015, the BBC reports that scientists found tiny pieces of plastic inside the guts of zooplankton, the microscopic creatures that many sea species feed on. In other words, plastic has entered our food chain. The fact is, there is just one food chain, and there is just one environment. I urge you to take steps to protect both. Please join the petitioners and the Green Caucus in voting favorable action on the Selectmen's motion to warrant Article Six. Thank you.
Mr. Spiegel?
Stanley Spiegel, Precinct Two. I just have a question. What was the reaction when the Stop &amp; Shop on Harvard Street and the Star Market on Beacon Street? What was your reaction to this? Have they been -- I assume they must have been queried, that would be the only reasonable thing to do. Are they supportive? Do they object? How did they react to this?
Can anyone speak for those august institutions? Yes, Ms. Galbart.
Janet Galbart for the Advisory Committee. We were informed at our public hearing by the folks in the planning department that they had queried both of those stores and never got a response. I would say that Stop &amp; Shop seems to have removed the plastic bags that they had been selling for 5 and 10 cents, and they've put up a big sign now that says, "Please sustain the environment and make sure you're using reusable bags."
Thank you. Ms. Khan?
Yes, Janice Khan, Precinct 15. So Stanley pretty much answered my -- asked the question I was going to ask.
Thank you.
You know, that we looked at our local merchants, and I'm glad to hear David Lyschinsky being pleased that they're opting out. And I wanted to know what the larger supermarkets and other large ones who are not opting out, are not able to opt out, how they felt, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I do the slideshow. Andrew Fisher, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 13, member of the Green Caucus. I want to speak first, there are several articles in this town meeting warrant that each address climate change in a small way. This one regarding single-use plastic throwaway bags, Article 19, which seeks to reduce mandatory parking minimums, the articles regarding electric cars, Articles 23 and 24 involving leaf blowers, pay-as-you-throw, and I expect that an argument that has been raised in the past will be raised to each of these. The amount of carbon emissions in the bags I use, the errand I run in my car, it's little. It doesn't do much. Using a leaf blower is so small it won't affect climate change, or all the leaf blowers in Brookline emit fewer carbon emissions than X. You fill in the blank. But the greatest journey begins with one small step, then another, and cumulatively, our actions do matter. In 2012, Brookline passed a ban on single-use plastic shopping bags. We were the first municipality to have such a ban in Massachusetts. Four years later, there are 40 towns with similar bans. Likewise, we were among the first towns in Massachusetts to outlaw styrofoam containers. Now there are 20. I think the next thing that's going to happen is the plastics industry is going to come to the State House, and instead of lobbying to have no bans on plastic, are going to say, "We need a law that -- we need a state law that's..." say, we need a law, we need a state law that's consistent because all these towns have different variations. And that's progress. And if we're going to make progress on the environment, it's going to be, as the moderator noted at the beginning of this town meeting, what, because we're doing it and trick, and it's going to trickle up from the local level. With Article Six, we're taking two small steps. Closing the loophole several stores primarily CVS has exploited. And I would suggest that I commend Ms. Gelbart for reusing her bags, but I, but she's in a minority. Ninety-five percent of the CVS bags do not get recycled or reused in any way. Why do we need, now, the second thing is the expanding the ban on, on plastic bags to include plastic product bags. Why do we need to put our bunch of bananas in a bag, our, a separate bag for our head of lettuce and a separate bag for our broccoli? Or the green pepper in one bag, the red in another, and the yellow pepper in a third bag? We didn't used to do it that way. All we are doing is burning more fossil fuel needlessly. In the 1970s, we had our first warnings about climate change. President Carter talked about putting on a sweater and turning down the thermostat, conserving and burning less oil. There were other warnings, we ignored them and started changing the way we lived. And can I have the first slide? Yes, if you can see, the, I think you've all seen the hockey stick graph. If you look at where it changed, started to change, it started to change consistent with the change in lifestyle primarily in the United States of using more plastic, of using more fossil fuel machines. And you see the spike. And the big spike is in the last 50 years. In order to stop climate change before it becomes irreversible, we need to keep 80 percent of our fossil fuel in the ground. We can't do that if we continue to live a lifestyle centered around throwaway plastic made from fossil fuel petroleum. There are some things we cannot easily do without. But what are the things that we should be willing to sacrifice in order to keep our planet habitable? The time to act is now. Why is the urgency? Why the urgency? My next slide. I'll let it speak for itself. High tides were predicted to begin in the year 2050. We're seeing this now. The next slide shows Boston Harbor on October 16th.
One minute, Mr. Fisher.
I'll try and move quickly. This, the next, next slide, these things weren't supposed to happen until 2050, they're happening now. In fact, the article in The Globe from where these pictures came said that this is going to start happening every three to six months. We're going to see flooding of the Boston Harbor Walk. Well, we're a month later to the day, tomorrow, and it's happening again today. Will it cost more to use biodegradable produce bags made of bioplastics? Yes, it will. Maybe a penny or two per bag, maybe two. Will the price come down if we get the supermarket chains like Stop &amp; Shop and Star Market to buy in bulk? Yes, they will. The same as the price of solar power is becoming competitive as the price grows. But can we afford not to pay the small price? We can't afford.
Please wrap up, Mr. Fisher.
Next slide, I have two more slides.
Well, you're also past your time limit, sir.
Uh, thank you.
You're welcome.
The other reasons to outlaw throwaway bags.
Mr. Fisher, we're not going to, we're not going to have a negotiation here. Thank you very much.
Uh, can I have, can I just ask people to vote favorable action on Article Six?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
On the motion on the orange supplement, number two, pages one to three, Mr. Richmond.
Recorded vote, please.
Yes, we certainly, if there are 35 Town Meeting members who would like a recorded vote, we'll have one. Would you stand, please? It's a little easier to count. Okay. We will have a recorded vote. This is Article Six, main motion. And whenever you're ready to start the timing. One is yes, two is no, three is abstain. The numbered keys. You vote anytime now. Motion carries by a vote of 181 in favor, 15 opposed, and five abstentions. We proceed now to Articles Seven through 11, all of which relate to the proposed development and rezoning of the land at the corner of Brookline Avenue and Washington Street across from the Brookhouse. The Article Seven is the rezon, principal rezoning article. It's found on pages seven dash 32 through seven dash 49, moved by Mr. Franco, seconded by Ms. Hyatt. Requires a two-thirds vote. No motion is offered under Article Eight. Under Article Nine is, the vote is found on pages nine dash 12 through 14, relates to a restrictive covenant. The, embodied in a draft that, the votes recites that it's attached as Exhibit A, so you might think that the draft would come after the vote, but it doesn't. It comes prior to the vote and it's located on pages nine dash four to nine dash 11, but it is incorporated in the vote by reference. Article 10, the motion is found at the bottom of page 10 dash five over to page 10 dash six. Both nine and 10 are moved by Mr. Franco and seconded by Ms. Hyatt. On the motion that starts in the last, last full paragraph on page 10 dash five, please insert the word "voted" prior to the words that the town authorized, the Board of Selectmen, et cetera. That this motion relates to agreements with the developer necessary to implement certain objectives that you'll hear more about. On Article 11 is, in the words of the article, with the usual amendments to convert the form of article to a form of motion, that is to say. On page 11 dash one, instead of to see if the town will adopt, that should read, "Voted that the town adopt," over to page 11 dash two, after the paragraph beginning, "Be it further resolved, strike the words, or act on anything relative thereto." And that is now in the form of a motion. The motion is made by Mr. Madison. Is there a second? No motion should fail for, thank you. Okay, so we're having a single debate on Articles Seven through 11 and you can comment on anyone or all of them as you wish. Call on Mr. Franco.
Good evening. Ben Franco, representing both the River Road Study Committee, the Petitioner of Article Seven, and later in my presentation, the Board of Selectmen, Petitioner of Articles Nine and Ten. My time is short, but I need to begin with two thank yous. First, to my colleagues on the River Road Study Committee for their hard work and dedication both during the committee process and in the weeks that have followed the filing of the comprehensive, comprehensive vision for the industrial island. And second, to Andy Martino for his hard work and his dedication. Next slide, please. The River Road Study Committee was formed in early 2016 to assess the redevelopment potential of the industrial island following years of town-commissioned planning studies of the Route Nine corridor and the entrance into Brookline from Huntington Avenue. These previous studies have cited the industrial island as a priority for focus in order to create the area more reflective of the Brookline brand and by extension, to facilitate the creation of a welcoming gateway into Brookline. Most recently, the town engaged a team of graduate studies, graduate students in urban planning from MIT. The students' recommendations were delivered to the town earlier this year and largely served as the impetus for the formation of the River Road Study Committee. All the planning studies the town has commissioned have recommended balancing development of commercial and residential projects, enhancing pedestrian amenities, easing pedestrian navigation, and creating district plans. Implementing these recommendations, the studies have repeatedly concluded, will facilitate the realization of our collective vision for this part of town. While today there are projects and improvements underway or nearing completion that will advance our shared vision, there is still more work to be done and Article Seven is a necessary next step. In addition to implementing outstanding recommendations from years of planning studies, the River Road Study Committee also sought to advance a comprehensive vision for what accomplishes the following goals. Minimize the shadows from future development on Village Way and the Emerald Necklace Park. Improves pedestrian and bike circulation. Makes the area around the industrial island more welcoming to people. Enhances and respects the abutting Emerald Necklace parkland. Balances building density with, in scale, with financial feasibility. Advances a vision for the public realm that allows people to move not only around but also through the district. Incentivizes an active ground floor and ground floor uses and creates a district plan where visitors and residents can work, live, and play. Next slide. What you see on the screen are pictures of the industrial island as it exists today. For Town Meeting members' reference, the area of Town Article Seven concerns is the industrial island bordered by Brookline Avenue, River Road, and Washington Street, the home of the Brookline Ice Company, the veterinary hospital, and formerly of a Gulf Gas Station. The industrial island is made up of very small, very small shallow odd-shaped parcels. The average parcel is 6,800 square feet, all of them bordered by parkland and to some extent impacted by the 100-year flood zone. This makes development difficult and challenging but not impossible. The industrial island is a very desirable location down the street from the Alama and just outside of Brookline Village at the confluence of major roadways and MBTA bus and Green Line branches. And as you, as you can see, the industrial island is a neglected part of town where the existing conditions are primarily automotive-focused and don't match our community's vision for what is a welcoming gateway into Brookline and what is acceptable in terms of design and character. Next slide. I want to spend just a few seconds illustrating for you what passage of Article Seven will enable to occur before drilling down into the mechanics of the zoning. The image you see now on the screen is a picture of what the industrial island currently looks like when viewed from the corner of Washington Street and Pond Avenue. With passage of Article Seven, the island could one day look, look more like this. Next slide. A more attractive, vibrant, greener streetscape with uses that match the community's vision for the area. Next slide. Here's a view of 25 Washington Street, the 25 Washington Street parcel, I should say, and site of the proposed hotel before the gas station building was demolished. Passage of Article Seven would transform 25 Washington Street from this to this. Next slide. Transforming a former dilapidated gas station surrounded by narrow exposed sidewalks, not in character with other entrances into town, into a vibrant gateway. Next slide. So how did the committee translate Brookline's vision for a welcoming gateway, an improved public realm, and a better pedestrian and bike access into a zoning article? The committee began by analyzing a range of uses that would help to achieve our collective vision for what this part of town should be. It became apparent quickly that the odd-shaped parcels and shallow lots present, present at the industrial island are not conducive to some uses, traditional office space, for example. What is feasible despite the constrained site conditions are a range of very specific residential uses with specific dimensional requirements along with active retail and restaurant uses on the ground floor. Article Seven proposes to add three specific residential uses to zoning bylaw and to permit them at the Emerald Island Special District. These uses were unidentified because they cater to two of our fastest-growing demographics and also impact, minimize impacts on town services, most specifically the schools. The zoning would also continue to allow service uses at the industrial island and would begin to allow hotels. Next slide. The graphic on the screen depicts what the entire future buildout of the Emerald Island Special District would look like and includes the Emerald Necklace crossing path and signalized crossing and roadway improvements that will come with the Gateway East project. Through a series of exhaustive architectural and financial feasibility analyses, the committee boiled, boiled the district down into three potential redevelopment sites. Each of the three sites would enable a developer to achieve the minimum space requirements and density for any of the allowed uses in the Emerald Island Special District to be viable. Beyond financial feasibility and floor plate requirements, the other driving forces behind the three development sites is the geometry required for structured parking. The committee made a decision very early on based on the community and the committee's desire to have a vibrant and pedestrian and bike-friendly streetscape, not to allow on-street parking at the ground level as the development of buildings on stilts is not conducive to creating a vibrant streetscape. This, of course, means that any parking onsite will need to be structured or garage parking. When you consider the geometry needed for structured parking, larger sites, like the three the River Road Study Committee's vision contemplates, are needed. Next slide. With a specific vision for the public realm and enhanced permeability and pedestrian access, and having selected the allowed uses, the committee then had to write zoning that would permit and incentivize the desired outcome. The committee did this by establishing a series of triggers. So if a developer has a minimum lot size of 13,600 square feet, complies with the special district requirements around minimum sidewalk width, height of the first floor, and public benefits, and is proposing to build one of the desired uses, the developer can exceed the current zoning, which permits an FAR of one, a maximum height of 40 feet, and is subject to the town's normal parking requirements. I also want to note that any project that is advanced under the special district zoning will be subject to the existing major impact design review team process and site plan review. Next slide, please. The committee spent many nights discussing how to allow more intense development while minimizing the negative impacts on the public realm, the Emerald Necklace Park, and the Butters. Given the range of uses being considered, each with a different floor plate requirement and programmatic requirements, and the desire to create well-designed, attractive buildings, the committee chose to take a form-based approach to regulating size and scale. What you see on the screen is a conceptual massing image of what the two proposed development sites to the north of the proposed hotel would look like. The committee voted to allow buildings in this part of the district to go up to a maximum height of 85 feet, provided that any mass above 65 feet covers no more than 55 percent of the lot area. Why 55 percent? This is the amount of lot coverage that provides for the minimum amount of rentable square feet required for any of the allowed uses in the Emerald Island Special District to be feasible. If we reduce the lot coverage to 50 percent, development would not quite be viable and 60 percent would be overly generous. 55 percent then is the goalie locks number, not too big, not too small, just right. The strict limits on building height and lot coverage ensure the building mass will be broken up while balancing development and feasibility. Next slide, please. The committee took a similar but more nuanced approach to regulating the size and scale of future buildings at 25 Washington Street. In recognition that this site is the most visible and the anchor of the district, the River Road Study Committee voted to allow a taller maximum height of up to 110 feet, but to impose additional maximum limits on the lock coverage at all levels of the building as depicted on the screen. This is both a prescriptive and flexible approach to regulating the scale of buildings as it ensures the mass will be broken up, but also allows for multiple design options to be pursued, encouraging a visually interesting and attractive building to be designed. This approach is a result of the committee continually pushing back against the developer to be more creative in their preliminary massing. As a supplement to the height and massing required, regulations in the zoning, the committee also developed a set, a robust set of special district guidelines, something you'll hear more about in a few minutes. Next slide, please. While Article Eight is not being moved, it's still worth talking for a moment about sidewalk widths at 25 Washington Street in recognition of the fact that this is the part of the zoning that's generated the most discussion over the past few weeks. The chart on the screen shows how much wider the sidewalks will be on all sides of the proposed hotel following passage of Article Seven, with the existing widths in regular font and the proposed widths in bold. Continuing the form-based approach of Article Seven to the ground level, the zoning employs minimum required sidewalk widths on all sides of the district, 12 feet on Brookline Avenue and River Road and 10 feet on Washington Street. These proposed sidewalk widths are the result of the committee's continually pushing back on the developer to create as wide sidewalks as possible and to push the building away from the Emerald Necklace Park. Next slide, please. Now for a word about Articles Nine and Ten. Article Nine would authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into an MOA that would lock in additional public benefits and public realm improvements beyond those that are required in the zoning, including off-site bike required in the zoning, including off-site bike, pedestrian, and landscaping improvements valued at $376,000, requiring the proposed hotel at 25 Washington Street to be designed and constructed to accommodate shared parking ramp access for future development on the neighboring site, which is a huge step towards facilitating development of the parcel north of 25 Washington Street. A shared maintenance agreement for a portion of the Emerald Necklace Park adjacent to the proposed hotel granting to the town of a permanent easement required to carry out the planned Gateway East improvements and job preference for Brookline residents. Next slide. Article Ten would authorize the Board of Selectmen to sign a tax certain agreement with the developer of the proposed hotel, locking in property tax payments for the next 95 years even if the property were to be sold to a nonprofit who would use the hotel for an exempt use. When the hotel is completed, assuming Article VII passes, it's estimated that it will generate $1.5 million in property and excise tax. This is roughly 10 times the amount of tax the entire industrial island generated in the most recent fiscal year. Next slide. I know I've given you a lot of information over the last 15 minutes, and more details will be discussed by the next few speakers, but let me conclude by summarizing what the town will get should Articles Seven, Nine, and Ten pass. The town will achieve longstanding planning goals for this part of town and maintain control over how development of the industrial island will unfold, significantly improve sidewalks, open spaces, and pedestrian and bike circulation in this part of, in this part of town which has been overlooked, significantly increase tax revenue estimated to be $1.5 million annually from the proposed hotel alone when property and excise tax are considered, and up to an additional $1 million when the two development sites north of the 25 Washington Street parcel are, are developed, depending on the uses that are developed. A guarantee that property tax will be collected from 25 Washington Street for the next 95 years regardless of who owns it, a one-time cash payment to the town for use to improve the neighboring parks and other public spaces. Next slide, please. A unanimous Board of Selectmen urges a vote of favorable action on Articles Seven, Nine, and Ten for the reasons I've articulated. The Board strongly believes the passage of these articles is a necessary next step to continuing the positive, positive momentum towards significantly improving the Route Nine corridor. Had Article Eight been moved, the Board would have urged a no-action vote because it would have prevented the hotel from moving forward, forcing the town to undergo, to forego many of the benefits that it would have brought with it. A unanimous Board of Selectmen also urges a vote of no action on Article Eleven. The Board urges the Planning Board and the Design Advisory Team that will be appointed should Article Seven pass and the hotel proposal move forward to closely examine the Washington Street sidewalk to validate the River Road Study Committee's conclusion that a wider sidewalk cannot be created and larger trees cannot be planted. This makes passage of the resolution unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Madison. And Ms. Signori, would you please come forward and sit in front row?
Hugh Madison, Precinct Five. And I'm speaking for Article Eleven. Article Eleven is a resolution asking the Selectmen to use their best efforts to widen the sidewalk at 25 Washington Street enough to allow a planting strip that includes a row of full canopy trees to separate the proposed cycle track from pedestrians. Next. I served on the River Road Study Committee. I am familiar with the many letters and comments by Precinct Five residents, in particular objecting to the height and mass of the proposed hotel. Over the years, I have served on a number of other committees that have expressed a vision for Brookline Village. The zoning included in Article Seven will revitalize the area, but it ignores some of the principles previously laid out for human-scale green design. The financial benefits of the proposed hotel are significant, and so I chose to try to influence one small aspect of the streetscape that will make a difference to residents and pedestrians, and I propose Article Eleven and ask for your support. Compromise will enable the developer to build to the scale he wishes, the town to profit from tax dollars, and citizens to have some of the conditions that make living in Brookline desirable. Next. People who live in Brookline know the reasons why: convenient location, good schools, municipal services, parks, and tree-lined streets. Article Eleven advocates adding green infrastructure like trees and a pedestrian-friendly walkway alongside a cycle track. This design can distinguish Brookline from Boston as less urban and more green, maintaining our reputation as a tree-lined, trolley suburb. Next. The 2005-15 Comprehensive Plan developed by about 30 residents and professional planning consultants working with the Town Planning Department talks repeatedly about the overall character of the Route Nine corridor and the need for a visual gateway to the town. Next. In the 2005 Comprehensive Plan, note that a very green area was suggested to replace the Gulf Station at 25 Washington Street. Next. This 2014 recommendation from McYoung-Kim landscape architects working on the Children's Hospital Concept Plan was, quote, "A view from Route Nine as one arrives in Brookline from Boston must include robust tree canopy and landscaping acting as visual gateway into Brookline," unquote. Next. Brookline has paid consultants many thousands of dollars and asked citizens to donate thousands of hours to develop an overall plan for Route Nine. We should be implementing past plans, including the intention to green the edges of Brookline and make our streets more walkable and human-scale as stated in the Gateway East Plan. Next. All buildings on this part of the Route Nine corridor have setbacks, except for the proposed Next. Sidewalk design is complex. To provide comfort and safety, a two-to-three-foot comfort zone is recommended to separate the walker from a building. It is uncomfortable to walk two to three feet next to the wall of a building. Article Eleven merely asks that a sidewalk with space for a green separation of walkers from cyclists be part of the design. Next. The average sidewalk width is proposed as 10 feet 8 inches. However, the so-called pinch point is only eight feet. This pinch point must be able to handle the pedestrian flow increased by development in the area. Since there is included in the current plan a four-foot overhang on the second floor of the hotel, it will be difficult, if not impossible, to include a planting strip to accommodate full canopy trees. I maintain it is important to include separation between cyclists and walkers for safety and to include full canopy trees for a green entrance into Brookline. Brookline is trying to encourage alternative transportation, and that means making walking easy, safe, desirable, and attractive. Next. These pictures show the problem at River Road: pedestrians and cyclists moving east and west and conflicting at the corner of River Road and Washington Street. There is substantial traffic turning onto River Road, further backing pedestrians up. Once one or two Brookline Place, the proposed hotel, residential units added at the Emerald Island, and over 600 units of residents are completed on South Huntington, there will be more pedestrians who deserve a safe, attractive experience coming into Brookline. Next. Another example of current heavy morning peak hour foot traffic. Next. These full canopy trees softening this edge of Brookline will be removed and replaced by the 11-story hotel with no buffer on Washington Street. Next. Brookline has signed on to the Complete Streets Program. The Complete Streets policy talks about giving special consideration to the most vulnerable users. The most vulnerable users are pedestrians: those walking to the D and E line trains or using the 39 and 66 bus lines, or bicyclists who are riding in all kinds of weather to reduce our auto traffic and air pollution. Complete Streets policy does not, say, apply our principles to certain streets, or the easiest streets, or those streets that are already park roads, as in the case of River Road. Next. This map shows the demographic characteristics of the area around the Emerald Island. All abutting areas are either minority, low income, or foreign language speaking. These are the walkers, the primary users of Washington Street. Do we intend to ignore their needs? Article Eleven pursues the recommendations of the Gateway East project, a cause for a green, welcoming gateway to Brookline. Here's an example of how columnar trees look in Waltham. The Selectmen in their report to town meeting have stated that, quote, "The Board expects a conversation about sidewalk widths will occur between the Planning Board, Design Advisory Team, and Developer." The Board of Selectmen, in fact, encourages that this conversation takes place, unquote. And by the way, the Transportation Board has also endorsed Article Eleven. In fact, Article VII already requires street trees approximately every 25 feet on all abutting streets. However, Article VII also allows the developer to make a cash contribution instead of planting trees. A cash contribution will not take the place of full canopy trees such as oaks or maples, nor will it provide the green entrance from Boston that Washington Street deserves. Article Eleven emphasizes the need for planting full canopy trees. Under Article Eleven, the Board of Selectmen and Planning Board can include this as an essential element in their charge to a design advisory team. In summary, next. In summary, this resolution asks the Selectmen to make every effort to keep faith with previous planning documents, make walking and bicycling safer, and create a welcoming green entrance to Brookline. Next. This is a once-in-a-generation chance to realize the potential expressed in the Comprehensive Plan. The hotel developer bought this property knowing that changes during rezoning were a risk. Almost all the developer's proposal, proposed design has been accepted. Surely, there can be compromise in the design. I ask your support for this resolution, as do many residents of High Street Hill who actually live and work in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hyatt and Ms. Signori, would you sit in the front row, please? Thank you.
Angela Hyatt, speaking for a unanimous advisory committee for Articles Seven, Nine, and Ten, and for a majority of the advisory committee for Article Eleven. Since there is only a short amount of time to summarize almost a year of incredible work by the River Road Study Committee, I'm going to use my three minutes to clarify three aspects about the River Road Articles, or the Emerald Island Special District Articles. The first is regarding the sidewalk widths, and as Selectman Franco noted, this is a very desirable site with its proximity to the LMA, for instance, but it's also extremely constrained. In fact, I can't even think of a more challenged site in Brookline because we not only have Article 97 protected parkland with River Road, we have a flood zone, we have not one but two existing easements, and a third easement that the hotel developer, developer is agreeing to grant. And lastly, we have probably the most important thing, which is just the, the parcel size and shape, which makes it very difficult to develop. So with that, on the surface, Article Eleven, which calls for the resolution for the full canopy trees on Washington Street, looks, it looks like a good idea on the surface, and it's certainly an earnest and admirable proposal, but the advisory committee was confident that after close examination, really looking at the plans and the information that was presented, adding the space along the sidewalk that's necessary to get a full canopy tree in on Washington Street, on Washington Street, means that you're pushing the whole face of the building back, which puts suddenly a lot of things into jeopardy. The shared parking ramp that the developer is agreeing to is thrown out. The number of parking spaces above grade, which is also part of the design guidelines proposed by the River Road Study Committee, those don't get met in the two stories. They have to, the building gets taller. So it's, it's not an easy thing to, to adapt a design proposal on a highly constrained site and make it work.
Thirty seconds.
You know, the, the benefits for the town include those that, that Selectman Franco noted, also the new public open space in the easement, which is increasing from 30 feet wide to 50 feet wide, connecting Pearl Street to the Emerald Necklace. And finally, I want to note about the, the rights of the current property owners. The newly proposed zoning does not affect the current or future property owners from developing their sites under the current zoning. The current property owners are an allowed use, and therefore they have the ability to stay, improve, or redevelop their property under the current industrial zoning with an FAR of 1.0. In fact, if Article VII passes, they have additional development opportunities at their disposal as long as they meet the minimum criteria that unlocks a special zoning.
Please conclude.
So the advisory committee recognizes the exceptional work and careful thought that went into the, this proposal, but we feel that Articles Eleven sends a contradictory message to the Board of Selectmen and other reviewing agencies. So by a unanimous vote of 23 to 0, we recommend favorable action on the motions offered by the Selectmen for Articles Seven, Nine, and Eleven, and by a vote of 12 to 10, we recommend no action on Eleven.
That is Seven, Nine, and Ten. Ms. Signori and Mr. Hyken, would you please come forward and sit in the front row? You have three minutes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and town meeting representatives. I am Alice Signori, a family member of a company that has done business in Brookline for almost 100 years, the Brookline Ice Company. I am not opposed to making the area more attractive. I am opposed to a zoning enactment that sends the message, however hopefully unintentional, that my business is not welcome. The proposed overlay allows the hotel and only the hotel to exceed the 40-foot height limit in the zoning district, and only the hotel to exceed the floor area ratio required in the zone. This is because of a new parcel size of 13,600 square feet or more. Of the eight parcels in the area, the small overlay district, only the hotel parcel meets the requirements. If Brookline Ice were treated the same way, we could update our existing business and make a more attractive building. Existing zoning has prevented us from upgrading and modernizing our operation. The proposed zoning overlay amendment unfairly advances the interests of the hotel while limiting Brookline Ice and other small parcel owners to existing requirements while providing no incentive for them to enhance the appearance of their business. Additionally, the overlay prohibition of surface-level parking prejudices owners like Brookline Ice that rely on surface parking. It appears that the drafting of this amendment serves to hopefully force smaller existing owners like Brookline Ice to sell to a more appropriate developer and to relocate. However, this is the only industrial area in the town, and we would not be able to relocate and stay in the town. Brookline Ice respectfully asks that a town meeting member move to send this important zoning amendment back to committee or to amend it to give every parcel the same rights as the hotel parcel, no matter what the parcel size, and to delete the requirement in Section 2C prohibiting the outside parking spaces at surface level. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to address you. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, for Ms. Signori, Signori's position, neither a motion to refer nor an amendment is before us, just the main motions. Mr. Hyken and Ms. Michaels, would you come forward and sit in the front row, please?
Steve Hyken for the Planning Board. The Planning Board unanimously recommends favorable action on Article Seven, which is the only of these articles that is strictly zoning. Therefore, it's the only one of these articles that we are directly concerned with. I was a member of the River Road Study Committee as the Planning Board's representative, and I, by the way, I want to commend Selectman Franco for his chairmanship of that committee, which was a group of 17 people representing a variety of disciplines: architects, planners, financial experts, real estate development consultants, open space advocates, and members of the community. So there was a wide range of opinions and, and ideas that were discussed over a period of about seven months, many meetings of a full committee, a zoning subcommittee, an architecture subcommittee, a finance subcommittee that looked into all aspects of this opportunity in the industrial island or the Emerald Island, and took what I think as a Planning Board member, a proactive and very inclusive approach to a, a new way of looking at zoning, where with respect to the hotel, we had terrific leverage with the developer who had an idea but needed considerable flexibility on the part of the town and therefore was willing to offer considerable flexibility in return to achieve a desirable outcome for that property. And... and also enabled us to look at the overall Emerald Island, which as you just heard, is a district of seven properties, one of which is a tiny town parcel at the northern end of only about 650-some square feet. Other than the hotel property itself, the other properties on the island altogether, including the hotel, only amount to about an acre and a quarter, with individual properties ranging from 6,000 to 8,000 square feet. Individually, they're not large enough to offer any real development opportunity, especially with respect to the difficulty of providing parking. So with all due respect to the owner of Brookline Ice and Cole, nothing in the zoning actually forces any of the existing owners to do anything that they do not take it upon themselves to want to do. And individually, they really do not have the opportunity to transform their parcels in the way that the hotel can transform the gas station site or other properties if combined will enable future comparable mixed-use development. The zoning also creates opportunities for some uses that the town has not previously thought to encourage, including micro units, which are becoming a very desirable form of affordable housing, artist's live-work or general live-work housing, and age-restricted housing for people 62-plus. In the process of looking at those uses, we also saw an opportunity to rethink the way we require what in many cases seems to be excessive parking. This is a real, a true transit-oriented district, and we were able to sort of recommend, with considerable input from our real estate finance consultant, significantly reduce parking standards that really make development feasible on this site. So you will hear a lot, you heard a tremendous amount of information from Selectman Franco at the beginning, you'll hear more about individual aspects of this proposed zoning from a number of speakers later on, including design, open space, finance, et cetera. But we think this is a real opportunity to take advantage of a area of town that is clearly in transition, it could set a standard for other, looking at other parts of town where there is development pressure as well. But we think this is a great first step to create a new and enhanced gateway to Brookline, and the Planning Board recommends favorable action, and we would expect with the design guidelines that are already approved by the Planning Board, and recognizing that not everyone in town was thrilled.
Please conclude.
Another 30 seconds. With the outcome of the Hotel and Boylston Street. The folks on White Place love that hotel, maybe not everybody does, but we took the issues with the design guidelines for that first hotel into account, creating a tighter set of design guidelines this time, and we expect that the Planning Board will see both in terms of site plan review and design advisory teams, a lot of future control over the exact development of each of these parcels. Thank you very much.
Point of order, Mr. Michael.
Ms. Michael. Yes, Mr. Spiegel.
Stanley Spiegel, Precinct 2. In view of your last comment before the President Speaker, in ordinary parliamentary procedure, a motion to refer is always in order, can be made from the floor.
I'm not going, I'm not going to accept a motion to refer on this article, Mr. Spiegel.
I wasn't planning to make one, but I wanted a clarification on that. You will not accept that.
Well, I've ruled that I will not accept a motion to refer. And I think for future reference for all of you, motions to refer are something that, when I was first in this role, I would permit from the floor. I've, over the years, decided that a motion to refer, given that it has to identify the referring, the body to which the matter is being referred, and it should provide the Selectmen and Advisory Committee in any case with an opportunity to study it and comment, I've decided that a motion to refer should comply with the same notice requirements as any other motion that's made under an article. So if that's a change in my policy, well, it is a change in my policy, and it's developed over the years, and that is my current policy with respect to motions to refer. Ms. Michaels and Mr. Dempsey, would you please come forward? And just one more comment before we start, Ms. Michaels. Lest Town Meeting be unduly prejudiced, the word "Cole" is no longer a part of Brookline Ice Corporation's corporate name. Ms. Michaels.
Thank you. Faith Michaels, Precinct 5. When the High Street Hill Association held their annual meeting this year and had a look at the plans for the hotel, there was an audible gasp in the room. The idea of a green entry to Brookline, complete with neighborhood amenities that many of us had been working on, was nowhere to be seen. Instead, we got a huge building squeezed into a gas station lot, built out to the sidewalk and hulking over the Emerald Necklace. We were urged to attend meetings, make calls, and write letters. We did. Unfortunately, this, this corner is all about another kind of green entry to Brookline, the kind of green that our town leaders believe that we greatly need. Many of the property owners along the industrial island are upset that the overlay puts unfair constraints on their ability to build on their own property and limits their future options. You heard from Brookline Ice tonight regarding that. Though the town said that they reached out to these small businesses, most of them had no idea this was going on or how it would affect them. They have no plans to sell or move their successful small businesses. Selectman Franco showed a very sad image of that area, but we in the neighborhood, we use the VAT, we use Brookline Foreign Motors, a lot of people use Brookline Ice, and there is the Chambler Building there. So it is actually a very well-used little strip. It's a strip that actually was put there many, many years ago. All these industrial, small businesses were forced to move to this island from other parts of Brookline because they didn't want them in the other parts of Brookline. So now, after being very successful and having their space for many years, they're being asked to change. The overlay really is designed to promote the hotel and the developer. It's not a bad place for a hotel, it's just too big for our little Gulf Station space. It will sit feet from and cast shadow on one of our most precious resources. In all of his imagining, I don't think Frederick Law Olmsted envisioned a structure like this abutting the park. In the end, there's a sense of permanence in this construction that will forever change the gateway to Brookline and the threshold to Boston of the Emerald Necklace. We can and should do better. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dempsey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Dempsey, I'm a Town Meeting Member in Precinct 6, member of the Brookline Transportation Board, and I was a member of the River Road Study Committee. So I speak before you tonight on behalf of a unanimous Transportation Board. We unanimously recommend favorable action on warrant Article 7 to best balance the needs of all roadway and sidewalk users, and to ensure that the Gateway East project can move forward with safe accommodations for all of these users. Furthermore, the Transportation Board, by unanimous vote, recommends favorable action on the revised language for warrant Article 7, spoken about by Hugh Madison. We are strongly supportive of this effort, provided that it does not place in jeopardy the needs of all transportation users, including the race cycle track proposed along the part of Washington Street as part of the Gateway East project. Please note that the developer of the proposed hotel parcel has granted an easement on this stretch that will provide some additional width to try to accommodate all users, even if that width still does require some trade-offs that will not ideal represent real improvements. I live in Brookline Village, a few blocks away from River Road, and I'm a regular traveler through this area, as a pedestrian, in a car, on a bicycle, and in a bus. I most often walk to the E-line or the 39 bus, and I often go to the Subway sandwich shop on Huntington Street, probably more often than I should. I truly believe, and the Transportation Board unanimously agrees, that this proposal is an enhancement, a critical enhancement in this area, that will make things better for all of these users, of all of these modes, but especially pedestrians. This includes the elimination of a wide pedestrian unfriendly curb cut that existed on both sides of the street for the Gulf Station. It includes a more active streetscape and a much improved engagement with, connection to, and deference to, the Emerald Necklace. This overlay district will lead to a more vibrant gateway to Brookline, and will contribute to the life of Brookline Village, including by bringing patrons to the village's restaurants and other small businesses. It is important to note that the passage of Article 7 is a meaningful step in the process of developing this site, but it is one step of many, and there are many more ahead. This includes continued oversight by the Transportation Board, which will be involved with planning in this area as the Gateway East project, and any proposed or future development on the River Road parcels advance. To be very clear, none of the small businesses in this area are being forced to do anything, and none of them are having additional restrictions placed on their development.
Thirty seconds.
This proposal is only an addition to the rights that they already have. The proposed overlay will encourage improvements that fit within the context of our neighborhood. That outcome reflects a process that was broad, deep, diverse, and embodied in the inclusion on the Study Committee of immediate butters, butters from Village Way, numerous comment periods with input from neighbors, the analysis of independent experts, and a substantive back-and-forth with the developer.
Please conclude.
That led to substantial concessions. Please join the Transportation Board in unanimously supporting Article 7 and Article 11. Thank you.
Ms. Nabrega and Ms. Pelkey, would you come forward, please?
Hello, my name's Mariah Nabrega. I'm speaking today as a member of the River Road Study Committee, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 4. I'm one of the 11 Advisory Committee members who voted in favor of Article 11, and most importantly, I'm someone who walks to and from work past the River Road site. As you've heard from other speakers, the River Road Study Committee spent many, many meetings discussing the zoning that you see in front of you in Article 7. To get to the final product, many compromises were made by individuals on the committee, including myself. Overall, I feel satisfied with the result, not happy, not ecstatic, but satisfied. However, of all those compromises, the only one that truly struck, stuck in my craw was the sidewalk width along Washington Street. As I said, I walk past there, I see how many people use this very short stretch of sidewalk which connects D-line, E-line, 66, 65, 60, 39, it's incredibly transit-rich. It's pretty common to have even three people crossing paths on the same little stretch of the road, or even four, as people are trying to pass each other, walking the same way, there's other people going the opposite direction, it's really busy. So with all this action, a sidewalk that's eight feet or even 10 feet wide, which keep in mind includes space for trees, is not much sidewalk at all. The motion under Article 11, which urges the Selectmen to use their best efforts to widen the sidewalk at 25 Washington Street enough to allow a planting strip that includes a full, a row of full canopy trees to separate the proposed cycle track from pedestrians, is a good thing. It says that if it's at all possible, we want full canopy trees, similar to most of the trees in Brookline, to mark this important green gateway to Brookline, not those spiky columnar trees which you saw in the picture that Hugh showed, which are really a poor second-best. By making the sidewalk big enough for those trees, we can make it wide enough for all those pedestrians I mentioned earlier. It's a win-win. The good news is that the president of Clermont, the developer of the site, has repeatedly stated that the concept designs that we have seen for the hotel, which would require such narrow sidewalks, are not final by any means. He has also said that those designs intentionally pulled back the hotel from the River Road side of the property in response to comments from the Study Committee about keeping away from the park, which forced the design, by keeping away from the park, it forced, forced the design to the very edge of the property on the Washington Street side. So passage of Article 11 can send a clear message to the Board of Selectmen, but also directly to Clermont, that we appreciate their efforts to date to respect the park, but we also need sidewalks that respect our basic needs as residents and pedestrians. Unlike some people, I don't see this as confusing or inconsistent with Article 7. 7 sets minimums, but 11 clarifies preferences.
Thirty seconds.
Article 11 is your chance to say that if possible, you prefer more trees and more sidewalks among one of the busiest entryways into Boston. I'm sorry, into town. In conclusion, I thank Hugh for bringing this topic to Town Meeting, which raised awareness of the sidewalk widths and tree treatments for this project, and allowed us to discuss and fully express our preferences as a community. With that, I urge you to vote favorable action on Articles 7, 9, 10, and 11. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pelkey.
Good evening. I'm Lynda Olson Pelkey. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 2, and I was a member of the River Road Study Committee. In years past, there have been conflicts between commercial development projects and their adjoining neighborhoods. I remember the days when neighbors felt they had no other choice but to file a lawsuit to stop a project. This was due in large part to the mismatch between what was desirable from the neighborhood perspective and what was allowed under our zoning bylaw. Our zoning was too broad-brush, the results were too unpredictable, and zoning parameters weren't tailored to localized conditions. Fortunately, there's been a concerted effort to do better. The town has moved towards a process of tailoring zoning to fit a place and to negotiate for substantial public benefits. We've come to understand the value of using state-of-the-art planning techniques to realize town goals and gain more control over development outcomes. I've had the honor of serving on all of the special commercial rezoning committees the town has set up in recent years. While there was a lot to like about previous outcomes, this is the first time that I've wanted to speak in favor of the article. So why is Article 7 different? We have a much better chance of getting what we think we'll get, and because of the proposal's detail and clarity, we have a much better chance of attracting quality developers. There's been progress in Brookline's approach to planning and zoning, and while we still have a long way to go town-wide, this article is a milestone and marks a new beginning of planning and zoning proactively. Planning for this area began with the comprehensive plan, moved on to Gateway East, then came the MIT study, bringing back Boylston. So how do we bring back Boylston? First, we need to recognize the importance of the public realm. The experience of visiting the industrial island needed a dramatic upgrade. People need to feel comfortable, safe, and welcome, and we needed to find a way to re-engage with our most valuable asset, the Emerald Necklace. This is why the committee took improving the public realm as a core principle, paying attention to creating a vibrant first floor, incorporating green public spaces, improving the streetscape with trees, lighting, and seating, minimizing shadows, and designing facades to make them welcoming and not imposing. On the transportation side of things, we needed to take advantage of all the opportunities to use public transportation, walk and bike, and we did that by incentivizing low parking uses and improving access for bikes and pedestrians. If we pass this zoning, the industrial island will be poised to be the first true transit-oriented development planned for and built in Brookline in modern times. By creating this zoning, we've given ourselves the chance to see a positive, green, people-oriented redevelopment that will be a complement to the village and the Brookline as a whole. Please vote yes on Article 7.
Thank you, Mr. Perry, and then I'll take some questions from the floor. Welcome back.
My name is Fred Perry, I live in Precinct 4. I'm in favor of Articles 7 and 9 and 10, but especially I'm speaking in favor of Article 11. I think that a vote for Article 11 should be very easy, in fact. Article 11 is aspirational, it is not prescriptive, it really says what we want for Brookline, and it doesn't force anything. The Selectmen have said, "Well, trust us, you know, we'll, we'll do it." You don't have to do it, you don't have to tell us, but I think that the town wants to go on record and say that, say this for itself, and not just trust the process. The big question is one of zoning and not of hotel design, and I think there's been a lot of attention paid to a design, which is only one of many possible designs, and the design that we've looked at doesn't fit well with Article 11, but it's only one design. There's surely every reason to think that there are other designs that, that could work. The streetscape that Hugh Madison suggests is much nicer, and we should aspire to it. I think that there is a consensus in the town that the sign, the final design can and should be better than the one design. be better than the one design that we've looked at over and over. Article XI asks that the selectmen and, by extension, the design review team, look at it with new eyes and see what can be accommodated. Maybe we don't get full canopy trees, maybe we do, but we probably can do better than what we've seen so far. I ask you to vote in favor of Article XI. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you, Ken Goldstein, Precinct Fourteen. Just a quick question with respect to Article XI. I wonder if it's been investigated whether, and by the way, I know that we just got finished with Gateway East layout process, but has it been investigated whether the layout of Brookline Avenue, Washington Street could be adjusted to accommodate a bigger sidewalk? And if that's possible, might we amend Article XI to suggest that as well?
Well, we're not going to do any amending tonight, sir. Can anyone respond to Mr. Goldstein? Mr. Franco?
Ben Franco, Chairman of the River Road Study Committee. I believe Mr. Goldstein asked about whether we'd investigated, making changes to River Road or probably more aptly to Brookline Avenue.
Right, to Brookline Avenue, the layout of the street, so that that extra sidewalk might come from what is currently part of the roadway.
Yeah, so the River Road Study Committee was charged with taking a look at the Industrial Island. We did not spend any time investigating changing the cross-section to Brookline Avenue. I'll note that the Transportation Board has a process for looking at street design, and we just didn't take a look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Jonathan Davis, Precinct Ten. Mr. Moderator, are there any figures or data as to what the effect of enacting Article VII would do as far as the assessments and tax bills for the industrial properties?
Ben Franco, Chairman of the River Road Study Committee. As I noted in my presentation, there would be an impact upon the twenty-five Washington Street assessment. We anticipate a million dollars of property tax being generated should Article VII pass, and additional property tax will be generated if Article VII passes and development occurs on those northern parcels. I am not an assessor. I defer to the town's assessor, but I assume that opening up additional development potential would have some impact upon the assessed value of property.
Thank you, Mr. Fine.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Jonathan Fine, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Thirteen. I believe that Article VII is good, and I'm inclined to vote for it. I do have this one concern over a situation which I hope never comes to fruition, which is down the road, some of the other parcels, a developer comes along, has a proposal, and one of the existing owners doesn't want to sell. And what I hope that the town does not do is to try to have a taking for the benefit of a private enterprise. If you remember, this happened, I believe, in New London fifteen, twenty years ago, went to the Supreme Court, and I hope that this really doesn't happen in Brookline. I just want to express my concern about that.
I don't think it's even legal in this state. Mr. Fine. Mr. Selwyn?
Lee Selwyn, Precinct Thirteen.
Closer to the mic, please.
Sorry. Lee Selwyn, Precinct Thirteen. I wonder if Selectman Franco or somebody else who was on the River Road Study Committee could enlighten us as to the extent to which the other businesses in the Emerald Island were involved in this process? Were any of them members of the Study Committee? Did they participate in any of the deliberations, and how were their views considered? Thank you.
Mr. Franco?
Ben Franco, Chairman of the River Road Study Committee. No property owners of Industrial Island properties were on the committee itself. I believe on two or three occasions, property owners did appear at committee meetings, but while the property owners were not on the committee, the town continually updated property owners on the conversations that the committee were having, so they certainly knew what was going on.
Mr. Richmond?
Clint Richmond, Precinct Six. I serve on the Board of Directors of the Brookline Green Space Alliance, and I just wanted to go on record here. It was circulated by email, but the Brookline Green Space Alliance does urge favorable action on Article XI. And speaking personally, you know, maybe the whole thing will be a protest, you know, but I think there's some disappointment that we're sensing here about the pinch point of the lack of trees around the circumference of the property as well. I mean, it's not just Washington Street, which is an important gateway, but, you know, as others because have noted, its adjacency to the Emerald Necklace is an opportunity, and I would say it's a two-generation, if it's, you know, it'll be there for fifty years or something, to add some greenery to kind of a desolate spot now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christ. Don't worry, we'll get to you. I often stop the speakers' lists to take questions from the floor, and this is one of those occasions. Mr. Rick, let's see, Mr. Blood?
Yes, Roger Blood, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Thirteen. I just want to follow up quickly on the remark by Town Meeting Member John Fine. It is legal for cities and towns in Massachusetts and elsewhere to take properties by eminent domain for the purpose of economic development and greater tax proceeds from development by other private developers. Massachusetts is one of the only states, or one of the few states, that hasn't passed legislation at the state level to prevent this kind of what many people consider eminent domain abuse. The only reason I bring this up is to mention that this town meeting, some years ago, voted almost unanimously in favor of a warrant article sponsored by John Bassett and myself that Brookline would never do such a thing.
Thank you, Mr. Blood. I stand corrected. Ms. Jonas?
Is it just questions, or can I make a comment right now?
Well, I've got six more speakers, and I'd like to give preference to them over comments from the floor. Ms. Ames? Is this a question?
Several.
Oh, boy.
So number one is, who has represented the developer? And who has negotiated on behalf of the developer?
You mean what lawyer? What? Well, I'm not sure that that's terribly relevant, but, Mr. Franco, do you know, can you answer Ms. Ames' question, the path of least resistance here?
The attorney for Claremont in this process was the Law Office of Robert Allen.
Hugh?
And who negotiated with the developer on behalf of the town?
I was the lead negotiator on behalf of the town for the MOA, and along with the River Road Study Committee, who obviously pushed back on the zoning proposal included in Article VII.
Okay, one more question, please. How much was the independent, so-called independent consultant paid and was hired by whom?
So the independent consultant was hired by the town of Brookline for the assistance, to provide assistance to the River Road Study Committee. I don't have the amount, but if you give me one second, I'm sure I can get it.
And while you're taking your one second, we'll hear from Mr. Fisher.
Thank you. I have a question regarding--
Let's get Ms. Ames' question answered.
Andrew Fisher, Chairman--
Hold on, Mr. Fisher.
I'm informed that the cost of hiring of that consultant was seventy-five hundred dollars.
A bargain at price. Thank you. Mr. Fisher?
Thank you. Andrew Fisher, Precinct Thirteen. I have a question regarding an alternative solution to the small, to the width of the sidewalk on Washington Street. We have a very wide street there that may be in need of a street diet, and I'm wondering, I recognize that it is difficult but not impossible, and I'm wondering what the parameters between difficult but not impossible might be in terms of taking six feet from the streetscape where we have four wide traffic lanes and ample width to provide additional width to the sidewalk in the context of further development of the Gateway East project.
I don't know what your definition of width is, Mr. Fisher, but that's pretty hair-raising when you get four cars lined up and side by side. Mr. Franco?
So thank you for the question. At the outset, I want to make clear that the particulars of road design were not a topic that the River Road Study Committee took up for debate, and these are highly technical decisions that fall outside of the committee's charge. But as many of you know, various improvements to this part of Route Nine have been discussed over the past few years as part of the broader Gateway East project. Right now, Gateway East is at the twenty-five percent design stage, and plans have been submitted to the state for their review and permission to proceed. The plans currently with the state are the second twenty-five percent design plans the town has developed. The first set of plans were reworked after the state and the public expressed concern about the lack of a cycle track in the first iteration. In order to accommodate the inclusion of the cycle track, the width of the vehicular travel lanes were narrowed, and I have been told that the state will not support any further narrowing of the travel lanes. I'll also note that the removal of the cycle track is not possible because both the state has indicated that this is a critical design feature, and because Brookline residents have demanded that it be part of the Gateway East project. Similarly, the wholesale removal of one or more travel lanes is not going to happen. It would create a traffic nightmare, and that's a technical term. With all that said, if the town were to go back to the state and again request more time to revise the Gateway East design, it would require the town to resubmit the twenty-five percent design for a third time, which would definitely further delay the project for an unknown amount of time and very likely risk state funding for the project altogether, putting the entire project at risk and all of the public realm improvements that many have worked hard to advance and that have nothing to do with the Emerald Island Special District zoning that we're here to talk about. I'll repeat that the fact that the Gateway East project is totally separate from the project that we are here talking about, the zoning that we're here talking about, and that the committee accounted for the Gateway East in its discussions and its decisions surrounding the public realm, but was not charged with making improvements to that project design.
Thank you. We're going to hear from a couple more speakers, and if the town meeting has patience enough, we'll take some more questions from the floor. Mr. Lewis and Mr. Christ, would you please come forward?
Ken Lewis, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Eleven and a member of the River Road Study Committee. Been asked to present a brief summary of the financial analysis that was performed by the committee in formulating Articles VII, Nine, and Ten. The River Road Study Committee established a financial subcommittee to address two key questions. First, what density is required to make redevelopment in this district financially feasible? And second, what are the financial impacts of this new development on the town? To answer these questions, we worked with the Architecture Subcommittee to test the financial feasibility of their massing models. Our analysis involved estimating the revenue and cost of the various mixed-use development scenarios and comparing the projected rates of return to current capital market requirements. Our findings were reviewed and supplemented by Pam McKinney, a highly regarded independent financial consultant. A few key conclusions should be highlighted. First, the high cost to redevelop parcels in this district will require mid-rise density to be financially feasible. The required scale is reflected in the dimensional parameters of the proposed zoning, specifically building heights, minimum lot size, and lot coverage ratios. Second, redevelopment of the district as permitted under Article VII will substantially increase net tax revenue to the town. Currently, the entire district generates annual tax revenue of only one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. The proposed hotel at twenty-five Washington would alone generate annual tax revenue over one-point-five million dollars upon stabilized occupancy. This estimate is based on conservative assumptions for both property tax and the town share of the occupancy excise tax, which is equal to six percent of room revenue. To put this in context, this new annual revenue would cover debt service costs on a twenty-two-million-dollar long-term bond at the town's current cost of borrowing. Redevelopment of the other two sites could generate an additional seven-hundred thousand to one million dollars of annual tax revenue, depending on the mix of commercial and residential uses. It should also be emphasized that the uses permitted under Article VII are physically beneficial to the town and that they do not add to the demand for schools. In addition to the increased annual tax revenue, the development agreements negotiated in good faith with Claremont provide substantial upfront funding for badly-needed streetscape improvements and for the shared parking ramp easement, a critical factor in the feasibility of the redevelopment of the adjacent parcels. Finally, it should be noted that the town would incur huge opportunity costs if twenty-five Washington is redeveloped as a forty-B residential project in lieu of a hotel. Under a forty-B, the town loses both control and money. The forty-B option is a real risk for this site, given that existing zoning permits a maximum building size of only nineteen thousand square feet. There are key structural differences in taxes generated by a forty-B versus a hotel, namely a seventy percent lower tax rate and no room excise tax. The differences could result, these differences could result in the loss of over seventy-five million dollars of tax revenue over a fifty-year useful life of the property. So in conclusion, there are substantial financial benefits from the proposed zoning, and I would urge you to vote yes on or not Article VII, Nine, and Ten.
Mr. Christ?
I'm a Town Meeting Member in Precinct Four as well as a member of the River Road Study Committee. The goal of Article VII is to foster attractive and appropriately scaled development that respects the Emerald Necklace Park and surrounding neighborhoods. The committee reflected on this goal throughout our process, recognizing that we must balance financial and programmatic feasibility with other community goals for this area while minimizing impacts on the park and surrounding neighborhoods. Next slide. In taking a form-based approach to regulating the massing of the Emerald Island buildings, the committee sought to create modulation in the shape of each building by breaking them up into smaller stepped pieces while keeping the guidelines flexible enough to allow for interpretation. The committee studied the guidelines which regulate the massing by checking them, sorry, let's, just got lost here, by checking them against the financial feasibility of the project, the geometry of the structure, parking, and the minimum dimensions for functional floor plates, among other variables. The three hotel massing options shown above describe the flexibility that the guidelines allow while still meeting the intent established by the committee. This flexibility gives the planning board and the design advisory team leeway to shape the final design of the building as it is developed in more detail. The same principle of flexibility was employed throughout the proposed special district zoning. Next slide. Beyond the dimensional regulations in the zoning, the committee wanted to ensure that their vision for this area remained integral to future conversations about the design of the buildings in the public realm, which is why we create a robust set of design guidelines that offer guidance in areas including building materials, building entries, active, transparent, and pedestrian-scale ground floors, rooftop screening of mechanical equipment, and the design of public spaces, to name a few. Next slide. To illustrate these considerations, I want to touch briefly on three before-and-after images which show the potential impact of the design guidelines upon the site's public spaces. The first depicts the committee's vision for the transformation of a rundown parking lot into a new public space which forms the green focal point of an active and transparent streetscape while connecting Pearl Street to the Emerald Necklace Park. Next slide. The second shows the transformation of the auto body shops along Brookline Avenue into an active streetscape with twelve-foot-wide sidewalks, varied massing, signage, active ground floor uses, and substantial plannings. Next slide. While the third image on River Road shows the street's transformation from a back alleyway into something that complements and has synergy with the neighboring park and surrounding neighborhoods while matching the character we all associate with Brookline. This was the committee's goal for the Emerald Island District guidelines, and I urge you to vote for favorable action on or not Article VII.
Those in favor of terminating debate, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a two-thirds vote. On Article 7, the motion on pages 7-32 to 7-49, if there are 35 people who would like an electronic vote, will have one. Okay, it looks like the usual suspects. This is Article 7, main motion. And you can start the time whenever you're ready. Remember, we're voting on the motion on page 7-32 to 49. One is a yes, two is no, and three is an abstention. Requires a two-thirds vote. Looks like it's going to squeak through. Motion carries by a vote of 184 in favor, eight opposed, and 10 abstentions. There is no motion offered under Article 8. Article 9 requiring just a majority vote for the restrictive covenant. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Article -- and any abstentions? Article 10 on page 10-5, authorizing the Board of Selectmen to enter in the necessary agreements to carry out the terms and conditions of the memorandum. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article 11. Yes, Mr. Madison? If there are 35 people who would like a recorded vote on Article 11, we will have one. Please stand. If there are 35, this is Article 11, main motion. Okay, you can vote anytime. One is a yes vote, two is a no, and three is an abstention. The Article 11 motion passes by a vote of 151 in favor, 40 opposed, and 11 abstentions. And thanks to the various committees that put in so much hard work on this proposal. Article 12, the motion is on page 12-2. We have quiet, please. Moved by Mr. Green and seconded by Ms. Lodesh that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to lease for up to 10 years various parcels and items listed after the first paragraph of the vote. Mr. Green.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Bernard Green, Board of Selectmen. This article calls for the leasing of town-owned property, including town-owned public utility poles, for a distributed antenna system, what I'll call here and after, DAS. What is DAS? DAS consists of small boxes and whip antennas placed on utility poles. Related mechanical equipment can be located at a distance from the poles and are connected by underground cables. A DAS system provides improved cell coverage and is in lieu of large, ugly towers. The town is nearing the end of its original lease period with a company called Extonet Systems that was authorized by Town Meeting in 2005. This warrant article would authorize the Selectmen to either extend or enter into a new lease agreement for a new 10-year term. Changes to the system are subject to the Planning Board's design review process, and other system changes would also require a public hearing for a grant of location by this Board, Board of Selectmen. The system has served South Brookline well in mitigating cellular and PCS coverage gaps in the South Brookline area. The Board of Selectmen recommends favorable action by a vote of 5-0, taken on September 27, 2016. On the vote on the amended article in your materials at page 12.2. Thank you.
In the Advisory Committee, by a vote of 21 in favor, zero opposed, and one abstention, recommends favorable action as well.
On the motion on page 12-2, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. We're in the middle of a vote, sir.
I have a question on the --
Well, you're too late. We're in the middle of a vote. I'm sorry. Mr. Davis.
I was here.
Pardon me?
I believe I was here before you started that question call.
Okay, Mr. Davis, what's your question?
Robert Davis, Precinct 5. I received an email from a constituent who lives on one of the affected roads this morning or this afternoon, and they had a simple question. They had heard that these units were not supposed to be installed within 50 feet of a home or house. And this is -- this person's particular road is very narrow, and it's obvious from looking at the map that any utility pole would be within probably half that distance from a home. And I know from personal experience, I walk my dogs late at night when there's not much other ambient noise, that these units do make noise. They have fans in them for cooling. And it's a minor thing, but I could imagine that this could serve as a nuisance to people who are living very close to one of these units. So my question is, is there somebody here who has knowledge of whether or not that is something that is looked at when they're installed? Is it part of the contract or part of the specs? Thank you.
Town Council will respond.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jocelyn Murphy, Town Council, still a resident of Precinct 16. I'm going to take a stab at an answer to this question, although I would ordinarily defer to the town engineer. I'm a resident of one of the streets that are affected, called our office a number of months ago, and reported precisely what the Town Meeting Member raising the question has said. I referred him to Polly Selko, who is the senior planner -- pardon me, the Director of Regulatory Planning in the Planning Department, and she readily answered his questions about the public process that is available and the hearing process that takes place before installation of these units.
Thank you. I hope that answers your question, Mr. Davis.
Not exactly, but I guess I'll have to. I did talk to the town engineer. I did talk to the town engineer. He did not know at this meeting. Thank you.
Okay. On the motion on page 12-2, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Any noes? Motion carries unanimously. Article 13. We will have a single debate on Articles 13 through 15, all of which stem at least from the same source. The motion under Article 13 is on page 13-6 through 13-10, moved by Mr. Sandman and seconded by Mr. Green that the town amend Article 5.8 of the signed bylaw as set forth on those Article 14, the motion is on the lavender supplement, pages 1 through 14, again moved by Mr. Sandman and seconded by Mr. Green, and there's one typo that needs to be corrected in the vote. If you will turn to page 5 of the lavender supplement, three paragraphs down is paragraph F, signs shall not be permitted on building walls. The next word is not, not, nor. Page 5 of the lavender supplement, subparagraph F, eighth, ninth word is not, not, nor. Article 15, the vote is on page -- motion is on page 15-4 relating to sales in public places, again moved by -- this one is moved by Mr. Sandman and seconded by Ms. Daly. And I call on Mr. Sandman. You certainly may, even though you didn't ask in advance.
Mike Sandman, speaking for the Advisory Committee, Town Meeting Member from Precinct 3. Articles 13, 14, and 15 will bring our bylaws into compliance with a 2015 extension of free speech that results from a Supreme Court decision, Reed versus the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, which held that a municipality can only regulate the physical aspects of signs, design, size, illumination, and so forth, but not the content. Articles 13 and 14 would bring Brookline to compliance with Reed versus Gilbert, and Article 15, using the same reasoning, would recognize the free speech rights of panhandlers who ask you for spaz change on the street and who are not trying to sell you anything. And I'll get to the details of that in a moment. Article 13 refers to signs that are on town property or that are visible within a certain distance of town property, such as a public park or a public way. The proposed bylaw defines what a sign is more specifically than the current bylaw and removes restrictions on content. It includes a requirement that any sign be in conformance with the State Building Code where applicable. It eliminates a separate reference to gas station signs since the town can no longer regulate content. It eliminates references to two classes of signs, non-accessory and accessory signs, and it sets a simpler penalty clause. The Advisory Committee recommends favorable action by a vote of 22-0 with four abstentions on Article 13. Article 14 applies the new definition of signs to Article 7 of the zoning bylaw, and therefore, since it's a zoning bylaw amendment, will require a two-thirds majority. Please refer to the supplemental mailing for the version that has correct paragraph numbering. As with Article 13, the changes remove references to signs for specific purposes or signs with specific content so that the entire bylaw becomes content neutral. In addition, the motion under Article 14 cleans up some redundancies with respect to how the size of signs is regulated. Article 14 is originally submitted restricted the number of temporary signs on residential property to one sign per property, which is in fact the current limit. That would limit the right of residential property owners to put up multiple signs during a political campaign. Although the current bylaw is seldom enforced, the Advisory Committee asks the Department of Planning and Community Development to revise the amendments to allow for multiple signs, and that change is included in the revised motion that you have. I want to give credit to Mr. Martino of the Department of Planning and Community Development and to Town Council's office, who have taken great care to ensure to the best of their ability that the proposed bylaw is consistent with the Supreme Court's decision and that the redundancies and inconsistencies in the current bylaw have been eliminated. The Advisory Committee voted by -- recommends a vote of favorable action by a vote of 22 to 0 with four abstentions. Article 15 deals with Section 8.02 of the town bylaws, which currently reads, "No person shall on any street or other public place solicit, money, or sell or offer for sale any tag, badge, or other article of intrinsic value for the purpose of obtaining money without having obtained permission to do so from the Chief of Police." That phrase, "solicit money," makes it illegal to panhandle without getting the approval of the chief. It's an unlikely population to line up at the police station for a permit. Numerous court cases have struck down anti-panhandling laws, including cases in Massachusetts. Town staff believes and the Advisory Committee agrees that the current bylaw violates the protections provided by Reed versus Town of Gilbert. Article 15 would strike the phrase "solicit money or" so that the first portion of the bylaw would read, "No person shall on any street or other public place sell or offer for sale any tag," and so forth. By a vote of 21 to 1 to 4 abstentions, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on the amended Article 15 as follows. No person shall on any street or any other public place sell or offer for sale any tag, badge, or other article of any intrinsic value for the purpose of obtaining money without having obtained permission to do so from the Chief of Police. Thank you.
And Ms. Hamlin, would you please come forward? Sit in the front row center.
Bernard Green, Board of Selectmen. I'd like to thank Mr. Sandman for a thorough and informative presentation on Articles 13 and 14 that I am seconding. And so as not to bore you with any unnecessary additional information, I'll only say that the Board of Selectmen, by unanimous vote, voted in favor of Article 13 regarding the general bylaws and also unanimously in favor of Article 14 regarding the zoning bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamlin.
Linda Hamlin, speaking for the Planning Board. This is -- I'm speaking for Article 14 because it really comes under our zoning bylaw, which we deal with every day, it seems like. Most of the points have already been expressed about what we need to do, a lot of housekeeping. Again, thanks to the planning staff and Town Council for really centering in on this because it's very detail-oriented and not something a lonely architect could do herself. But we thank them for that. The big thing in the change in the zoning bylaw would be also that we added some defined language for signs and also adding a thing that we often make conditional on illuminated signs to have a rea-stat. So that's very clear, and hopefully that will be covered with this. Thank you. We encourage you to vote favorable action on this.
Ms. Daly, do you wish to be heard?
Yes, I had to speak because the Board of Selectmen unanimously agrees with the Advisory Committee on Article 15, but I do have to thank the Advisory Committee for saving us from having a section of our bylaw with the title "soliciting," and they changed that to "sales in public places." Thank you very much.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jonathan Davis, Precinct 10. Does the existing bylaw and would the revised bylaw apply to things like squeegee men who are not offering anything for -- who are not offering items for sale but rather are offering a service? I don't know how many of you know about squeegee men, but perhaps some of you do.
This is Article 15. Would Town Council like to respond to Mr. Davis? Oh, Chief O'Leary? Just hang in there, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Moderator, I respectfully defer to Chief O'Leary.
Yeah, certainly.
Do you know, lady, Chief of Police, could you do me a favor? Repeat the question?
Yes. Does the existing bylaw and would the bylaw as amended, would that, would they apply to prohibit or allow squeegee men?
Yeah, would, would someone translate that for us?
Okay. A squeegee, a squeegee man?
Oh, yeah, the squeegee.
Yeah, the squeegee, the squeegee man is, is someone who jumps out onto the, in front of, in front of cars that are, are waiting at a light and offers to, to squeegee their, their windows for a fee.
Or starts squeegeeing without asking.
Well, fortunately, we haven't had to deal with that at all. But I would, I would say that it would probably allow it because you're getting a service in return for money.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. On, you can stand down, Chief. Thank you very much for your, your assistance. Article thirteen, on pages thirteen dash six to thirteen dash ten, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article fourteen, on the lavender supplement with the correction that I told you about as we started into this block of articles, those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article fifteen, those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously. Article sixteen, before we get to that, it's my, always been my practice, unless I forget to do so, to announce the names of those who have signed up to speak when there's a motion for the question, and I neglected to do that in Article seven, and my apologies to the following people, Town Meeting Members Vitolo, Hockelightner, well, yes. Oh, yes. Ms. Mockmuller and Meryl Lace. Article sixteen, better late than never, I suppose. We are debating Articles sixteen through eighteen as a group. There is no motion being offered under Article sixteen. Is Mr. Ananian with us? Yes. At seven oh-five, you were going to support the motion to refer. It's now ten o'clock. What is your preference on Article seventeen?
If the motion to refer should, if somebody's, you know, if you've come here, or if it fails?
Well, you can put the motion on the floor and then speak in favor of support, of the referral. If referral fails, then we'll deal with the main motion.
Because there's a consequence to unfavorable motion on a zoning-related article, if the motion to refer should for some reason fail, I would like to have a vote on the main motion.
We're going to have one debate.
Yes.
And when it comes time to vote, the debate will be all over with, and on Article seventeen, we will vote first on the motion to refer. If the motion to refer passes, then we do not get to the main motion. If the motion to refer fails, then we do get to the main motion, and there will be a vote on the main motion if the main motion has been put forward. So my question to you, sir, is are you going to move the main motion on the, on the, whatever the?
Yes, I am.
This color is, rose-colored supplement number one?
Yes, I am.
Okay, fine. On Article seventeen, Mr. Ananian moves and Mr. Vitolo seconds. The motion on page one of the rose-colored supplement, Ms. Heller moves and Ms. Banka seconds. A motion to refer the subject matter of this article to the Climate Action Committee, and that motion is found on page seventeen dash six. Article eighteen, are you moving Article eighteen, too?
I am.
Okay. The motion is on page, main motion is on page eighteen dash two, over to eighteen dash three, moved by Mr. Ananian, seconded by Mr. Vitolo. The motion to refer, there is a motion to refer to the Climate Action Committee, found on page eighteen dash six, moved by Ms. Heller, seconded by Ms. Banka. You have ten minutes.
Good reminder to. Thank you. My name is Scott Ananian. I am a Town Meeting Member from Precinct Ten and a petitioner for Warren Articles sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, which support electric vehicle charging in the town, and I'd like to begin by thanking the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Committee, the Planning Board, the Climate Action Committee, the Building and Planning Departments, and Town Council for all the time they've spent with me and the advice they've given me on these.
How about the moderator?
And the moderator as well, yes, thank you. I'm sure I've forgotten some people. The Town Administrator I will thank as well in due time. Next slide, please. So I'm not going to belabor this, the hour is late, but we live on a small planet and everything we need to live and breathe is that tiny little fuzzy section between the earth and the, and space there. Next slide. And we're busy filling it with exhaust and carbon dioxide. Our transportation infrastructure is overwhelmingly fueled by oil, and the pollution from burning oil is known to be harmful to human health and a leading contributor to climate change in addition to costing drivers billions of dollars in fuel costs. Next, next slide. So as a result, we need to accelerate the transition from fossil fuels for the sake of our children, our climate, and our planet. The only question is, how can we do that best? Next slide. One good solution is electric vehicles, which reduce carbon dioxide emissions by sixty-seven percent. That, that's the number here in Massachusetts, given our, our particular mix of electricity generation. If you move to completely green generation, and there are various proposals in our town to allow you to opt in to, to a pure solar power, or solar and wind power for your particular energy, you can drive that carbon cost directly to zero. Plug-in hybrids are also counted as electric vehicles, and what I'm going to discuss, they can also benefit from the charging infrastructure which is being proposed here. They also reduce carbon dioxide emissions, although perhaps not quite as much as, as a pure electric vehicle. Next slide, please. So this is the one with my, my wonderful son, who I think is asleep by now, or he ought to be. So this is, these articles propose a small step toward a greener future. As we've discussed before, there's no one magic bullet. We're going to have to keep taking small steps. We, we took a step earlier this morning, earlier this evening with plastic bags. This is one more small step towards reducing our carbon footprint in the future. We are seeking to reduce emissions by building visible charging infrastructure, and I'll explain why that is a good mechanism for this in a future slide. There's three articles, sixteen, which fixes town chargers, seventeen, which adds outlisted parking lots, and eighteen, which adds to homes. Next slide. And the good news is, sixteen, we don't have to move. The, since filing the Warren article, the town, and this is where I thank the Town Administrator and the Department of Public Works for taking responsibility for repairing these two electric charging stations, which are in the town, one by Town Hall and one in Babcock Street. They used available grant funds. They will be repaired and replaced, and I would like to thank them and the Board of Selectmen for their, their assistance in this, in getting this work done. So there will be no motion on Article sixteen. So, next slide, moving on to seventeen and eighteen. These propose basically the same thing by two different mechanisms, a zoning bylaw in seventeen and a resolution to amend the building code in eighteen. What's proposed is basically just a dryer outlet or an electric range outlet, although it allows you to install a complete electric car charger. It doesn't require that. It doesn't require a dedicated spot. It looks for charging support at home and at work, wherever there's off-street parking. Article seventeen proposes just two percent of spaces. I'll show you how that compares to other similar measures, and because there are existing protections in state law, this affects only new construction or substantial change of use only. So, next slide, please. So the reason why building charging infrastructure is a good means here is that electric vehicles are contagious. The previous studies have shown that solar power is contagious in this way. If you install solar on your roof, your neighbors are much more likely to install solar themselves. Electric vehicles are contagious in the same way. Next slide. One study showed that employees who work at, at a place where there is a charging facility at their place of work are twenty times more likely to buy an electric vehicle for themselves. So this is the, the effect we're trying to capitalize on here. By, by seeding our town with chargers both at home and at work, we can encourage electric vehicle adoption in our town in the years to come. Next slide, and if you're going to do this, it's cheapest and safest to add these chargers at one time, which is when you're building new construction, and, yeah, because of time, we're just going to go on to the next slide. I think I've discussed this more in the combined reports, if you have questions on that. Comparing to other efforts in our nation and our world, Boston Next Door requires five percent of total parking spaces under certain categories, be EV-ready. New York City, which is perhaps the most comparable, requires a charger installation, not just an outlet like we proposed, and twenty percent of new and expanded spaces for off-street parking. So our two percent should seem very modest in comparison. And Washington State, there's a statewide effort, California, Seattle, Ontario, Europe, China, Germany, Netherlands. We are not near the, the vanguard here. We're, we're sort of in the mid-ground, trying to, trying to bring us, ourselves up. Next slide. And the time is right, there are, this shows thirty-six different models of electric cars currently available from twenty-one different makers, and that trend is just increasing. Next slide. And this shows sort of electric vehicle sales over time, which are also increasing. Matter of fact, we set sales records for both this year and for this past quarter ending on September thirtieth for the number of electric vehicles sold, and is driven by the cost of the battery packs, which is decreasing, partly due to cell phones and everything else which uses these lithium ion batteries these days. So the price was a thousand dollars a kilowatt in 2010, and now it's down to three hundred and fifty dollars a kilowatt, and is expected to fall down below a hundred dollars a kilowatt in the next decade. So these, these vehicles are going to become more and more affordable. Next slide. The impact in our town is modest. The Building Commissioner, Mr. Bennett, please, gave me a list of, an estimate of how many developments in our town would be affected per year, so we're not talking about a huge change overnight, but we are talking about something that we can grow step by step, year by year, that will encourage, that will improve situation in our town. Next slide. Question that's just frequently asked is, why not let gas station owners do this? Why not have electric gas stations or something like that? The answer is that electric vehicles are fundamentally different in how you use them. Ninety percent of charging events are at home overnight, and ninety-eight percent of charging events are at home or at work, which is why those are the places that we're targeting in these articles. Next slide. Just reminds you, what we're talking about, basically an outlet like that to plug in an EV. You could also use it for an RV or for a welder in your garage. It's actually something that's, that's plausibly useful in the short term as well. Next slide. So Warren Article seventeen is a zoning bylaw amendment for EV chargers in off-street parking facilities. Next slide, please. It's structured like our existing support for bicycle parking, two percent of parking spaces not dedicated, and it doesn't infringe on the, the building code. Next slide. So, this is the, the bottom line that necessitated a conversation with the moderator here. I am accepting the, the motion for referral on Article seventeen, although I believe the protections in, in the existing state law regarding zoning changes are robust, and we protect all of our existing properties from sort of unexpected consequences when we amend this. The question arose again and again in public hearings, what about this situation? What about this situation? I don't want this small improvement I had planned to my house to turn into an expensive project because I have to install an EV charger. So I think we can take the time before spring, Town Meeting, to address those concerns in public hearings and hopefully bring back something which has the confidence of the Board of Selectmen, the, and the Advisory Committee and all of you. Next slide. Warren Article eighteen is the one I would urge you to consider strongly tonight. Next slide. This is a very dense slide, which shows the state law which provides the ability for the Town of Brookline to adopt a more stringent building code than the statewide building code, which is what we're asking for here. And there's a letter in your combined reports from the State Department of Fire Protection and Safety, which is the, the ultimate authority here, who affirms that this is a reasonable mechanism for what we're trying to do. Next slide. Again, like building, like Warren Article seventeen, we're trying to try, install electric outlets or charging support, and this is the same fundamental goal that the State Department of Environmental Resources, the State Energy and Environmental Affairs Commission, and the Sierra Club here in our state are working on. We'd like to do this first in our town. It is a non-binding resolution, so you shouldn't get too, too.
And you have, you have one minute to promote it.
Thank you. About the whys and wherefore's here, that the, next slide, actually. This provides an opportunity for Brookline to lead, and the next slide, which is what I would like you to do. So, there, I believe there's no, no need for a referral motion on Warren Article eighteen, especially not to a Selectmen's Committee. With Selectmen, this is a non-binding resolution, asking the Selectmen to do something, they already have the ability to, to, to consult among themselves, make any amendments or changes they feel are necessary, and propose it to the state. So I, I would urge you to vote no on referral for Article eighteen, but to send a clear message that we do care about the environment here in Brookline, and we would like to lead, and to vote favorable action on the main motion for Article eighteen. Thank you.
Ms. Banka, you can have ten minutes if you really need it. Thank you.
Carla Banka, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Thirteen, speaking for the Advisory Committee. Articles seventeen and eighteen encourage the town to increase the infrastructure necessary to support the ownership and operation of electric vehicles, also known as EVs, in the town by increasing the number of EV-ready parking facilities. Article seventeen, a zoning amendment pertains to off-street parking facilities. In Article eighteen, a resolution requires state approval of tightening the town's electrical code to compel the installation of equipment to support EVs in garages for dwelling units. While supporting them in principle, the Advisory Committee has a number of concerns with the articles as presented. Article seventeen, the zoning amendment focuses on parking spaces, but that term is not precisely defined. It could include the spaces in a garage for a two-family house or for a multi-story apartment building. It could also include the spaces in the Trader Joe's parking lot or in the parking area for United Parish on Harvard Street. The requirements of Article seventeen could be triggered by a variety of situations, including new construction or alterations. But if the not-for-profit United Parish and the for-profit Trader Joe's wanted to alter their parking lots under Article seventeen, they would be subject to the same requirements regarding EV readiness, regardless of the cost of the project or the financial assets of the owners. Article eighteen focuses on attached and detached garages for dwelling units, but again, the lack of specificity means that the dwelling unit could be in an attached, a detached, or multifamily building, thereby duplicating or at least overlapping with Article seventeen. So clarity is one concern. Another is the potential cost of compliance, especially if providing EV readiness is part of a renovation or upgrade as opposed to new construction. Estimates for the cost of retrofits range from modest to very expensive and are subject to many variables, including distance from the electrical panel to the charging outlet location, possible trenching, existing electrical loads, and wiring upgrades. Such costs could place an undue burden on a homeowner, a small business, or a nonprofit organization. A third concern is whether these two articles create the best route to take the town to becoming an EV-ready community. Both Planning Board members and Building Department staff have opined that in the near future, state regulations may require all new homes to have EV chargers. Referral of the two articles to the Climate Action Committee is a sensible course of action. The committee is already familiar with the articles and their intentions and is populated and staffed with individuals who understand the issues, support the goals, and are prepared to undertake further study. The issue is important, but there are problems with the articles as presented, and we need to get this right. By a vote of nineteen-two to one on Article seventeen and sixteen to seven to zero on Article eighteen, the Advisory Committee recommends favorable action on referral. Thank you.
You're next, after, after Mr. Vitolo. No, you're, you're after Mr. Vitolo. We're alternating proponents and opponents here.
Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Six. We're moving quickly, so quickly, that I wasn't planning on drafting these comments until tomorrow. Loosely speaking, and ignoring agriculture, gas leaks, and a few other items, loosely speaking, our emissions are 1/3 electricity generation, 1/3 heating air and water, and 1/3 transportation. 80% by 2050. The path to 80% by 2050 is straightforward, though not easy. Decarbonizing heating is the hardest, so we must decarbonize our electric grid by more than 80%. Roughly 95% carbon-free is possible with current technologies. Therefore, we must decarbonize our ground transportation completely, by going electric, 100%, every vehicle, for we must get to 80% by 2050. And so we need to change our infrastructure to achieve that transportation goal, and the most cost-effective way to install electric charging infrastructure is to do it when the tradesman is already on site. Warren Article 17, yeah, let's refer it. If 75 days aren't enough time to study the consequences, then let's take more time. But Warren Article 18, I don't believe very many of the 200 legislators on Beacon Hill will read it, but hopefully, hopefully, some of them will hear electric vehicle charging and building code. I don't think rewording the resolution will change what they hear. I think, I hope, that they'll hear electric vehicle charging and building code. And so I ask that you vote no on referral on 18, and yes on the main motion on 18, because I don't think taking an extra six months to change the details of the language will at all change what our legislators on Beacon Hill hear. I just hope that they hear electric vehicle charging and building code. Please vote referral on 17, no on referral 18, yes on the main motion on 18. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Heller and Ms. Hamilton, would you come forward, please, and sit in the front row center?
Nancy Heller, for the unanimous Board of Selectmen. Change the podium here. So you've heard the three previous speakers describe these articles, and I'm not going to go into great detail about it. I think Ms. Banka outlined the cogent reasons why we should be referring these articles. To say that the Board of Selectmen was concerned, we're very supportive of the idea, and we've been very supportive of climate action issues in most of the warrant articles that have come before us, and we are supportive here, but we believe that study would improve this article. Right now, this article, I'm talking about 17 now, grants basically is just blanket across the board. New construction, none of us viewed that as an issue. People are going to a great expense anyway, so why not? But in the case of small businesses, nonprofits, individual homeowners, it could represent a burden, and we wanted to take, have an opportunity to take a closer look at that. In addition, there's an issue, what happens if somebody lives across the street from Town Hall or from the Babcock Street Lot, where there's already a charging station? Does that mean that they have to install one, two? Issues like that. We felt that the technology for charging stations, electrical specifications may change. We want to make sure that anything we require could meet a future need, and we believe that for this reason, for these reasons, further study is needed. And we refer to the Climate Action Committee. Now, I'll put on a different hat, and as co-chair of the Climate Action Committee, we also had a discussion in a public hearing about this, and we also voted to refer it. We didn't know we were going to be voting to refer it to ourselves at the time, but anyway. We actually had many of the same concerns that other committees have had, and that is the potential burden on people who are renovating, not new construction, but renovations, individual homeowners, small businesses, nonprofits, churches, educational institutions, et cetera. So we believe that the Climate Action Committee also believes, and obviously it's very supportive of the idea of the article, believes that a referral is appropriate. For Article 18, the petitioners seem to agree about referral.
20 seconds.
Okay. So 18, the building commissioner has told us that the state building commission is addressing this issue imminently, and the board feels that it may be more effective to petition the state to amend its code to avoid potential inconsistencies with whatever the state comes up with. So we believe that referring, again, it's not for very much time, just till the spring, referring this to the Climate Action Committee. The Climate Action Committee also took the same position would be the prudent course of action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
Good evening. Heather Hamilton, Precinct 3. Speaking on behalf of the Green Caucus, we endorse favorable action for Warren Articles 17 and 18. We want to see infrastructure necessary to support electric vehicles become the norm and widespread throughout town. Thank you.
Thank you. We will, on Article 17, we will deal first with the motion to refer. Those in favor of the motion to refer, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries, and we do not get to the main motion under Article 17. Article 18. The, first, the motion to refer to the Climate Action Committee. Those in favor, please raise your hands. Those opposed, motion carries by a majority vote. Each of those motions carried by a majority vote. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we have a small dilemma. Article 19 is the next article, and you will be -- could we have quiet, please?
The vote was doubted.
I'm sorry?
The vote was doubted. Seven people doubted the vote.
Well, let's have an electronic vote. This is on the -- I can't make this motion myself, but I would encourage an electronic vote if someone wants to move that. Okay. Are there 35?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We'll have an electronic vote. This is Article 18, motion to refer.
What is this, a vote for referral?
This is Article 18, motion to refer. We're dealing with only the motion to refer at this time, which I announced as having been passed. So you can now vote. The motion to refer carries by a vote of 101 to 74 with five abstentions. Now, ladies and gentlemen, it's our customary practice to complete whatever article we're dealing with at 10:30 and then take a motion to adjourn. However, the next article is Article 19, and there are as many people signed up to speak on this article as there were under Article 7. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn town meeting until tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Town meeting is adjourned until 7:00 PM tomorrow evening.